All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 16th, 2021, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have each of you with us this evening. At this time, Ms. LaMagno will review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission during the business meeting. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and in front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda, excuse me, agenda item number, signature and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Resolutions under Administrative Items Number 10 are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Item Number 7 is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You'll be told when your time has expired. Item Number 14 is the public comment form, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing a green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disloyal conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinance reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disloyal manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or ward thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse to obey, and ruling of the presiding officer such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, and members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the day being discussed
Ms. LaMagno may we have a call?
Commissioner May. Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Traeger.
Here.
Commissioner Delgado.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
Well, now we move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the May 19, 2021, regular city commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Traeger. Have any questions or comments? I'm hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. At this time, we'll have our agenda approved. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we do have a couple of changes, and we're asking that you add addendum Number 80, Piper Construction Company Inc. contract approval to the consent items. This is an item dealing with the emergency order for soffit repair at the golf course. Funding is available for that item. Move Agenda Item AM, the Atlantic Housing Development Incentive Agreement, to the administrative items. And also add the following to Agenda Item AN, allocation of bike we sponsorship funds. Commissioner May recommended doing something during the July 4th weekend with Commissioner Reed at the Midtown location and the pool. So we're going to do donation of $250 to the leisure services for the July 3rd, 2021 pool party for the community youth hosted at the Midtown from the bike we sponsorship funds of Commissioner Juanita May and Commissioner Paula Reed, bringing it to a $500 total.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, would it be possible for us to move the discussion on the citizen comments earlier in the meeting and just go ahead and talk about it, take action on it earlier, so that we could incorporate that in tonight's meeting? Is that possible?
Oh, wow. You wait till everybody shows up, and then you want to do that, don't you? Well, since I certainly am agreeable to that. I'm agreeable to it.
Do I need to make that as a motion to move that? Is that the correct way to do it?
That would, would...
Say handshake. Say a name.
Would not really require a motion. We can just change it on the agenda.
I can take it first under administrative items, since we have no public hearing.
Okay. Yeah. I'm sure the residents would like that, but it would require a little bit of a different... Before we do public comment, I would like to be able to have a discussion and allow the manager and the chief and our attorney to weigh in, and then I will set the tone with the remarks that we had kind of prepared.
That's right.
So that way they are able to do that before the residents speak if we choose to change it in that way.
Sure, that would be fine.
It would be perfect.
Mayor.
Okay.
May I make a request with regard to the agenda? We have the lead attorney in the opioid litigation here tonight to speak to the opioid settlement, and he came in from West Palm Beach and needs to drive back tonight. Would it be possible to take that item ahead of the public comment item?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so we'll... You got that?
I got it.
Okay.
So with those changes...
With, okay, with those changes, I need a motion?
I make that motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We have no items under item number six, so we're going to move on to item number seven. This is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. My first speaker is Frederick Brown, speaking on 8C and E, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Thank you, your name is Frederick Brown, 1501 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Once again, I would like to speak on the proposed water tower and pumping facilities that is going to be essentially eliminating suburbia park in a residential neighborhood. You know, with my years of experience working in water and wastewater, and I have seen some facilities that have been built very well in areas where there are parks, this is definitely not one of them. And while I realize there was a water tower in the past, and I realize that there is a high need for water in the area, an aerial survey of the area does show that there are more suitable areas for such equipment to be placed rather than the middle of a neighborhood that involves removal of park for the citizens that live in the area. Now, I realize that this agenda item is an emergency order to increase it for adding ammonium hydroxide. Now, when you think about what you're doing there, this is a chemical that's very caustic. You have to deliver it to that neighborhood where there are families and children and whatnot on a regular basis. So not only are you in a situation where you're putting a water tank in a pumping station in a residential neighborhood to generate noise, et cetera, you're also bringing in what will be hazardous materials as well on a regular and ongoing basis. So therefore, I would implore that the city rethink this. Yes, I know the pipes are there. Yes, I know it would save a little bit of money to hook up to the old existing pipes, which while I don't have records of how old they are, are going to be needing replacement at some point anyway. So instead of just putting Band-Aid on a situation that basically destroys a residential neighborhood, I would suggest that you look into this a little bit further and try to move these things out of that area. There are areas nearby that are more industrial and be more suited. The water can be easily pumped from tank to tank and transferred to suit the needs of the city. I only have 30 seconds left. I'm going to talk on another item, and that is the Aurora Pumps. Now, I realize that you have that listed as a sole source item. If you're familiar with the company, Aurora Pumps is a longstanding company. They've been bought out by Pentair. Pentair's long-term plans are basically to push that type of pump into another direction. So what you're doing effectively is approving a dinosaur, just simply because you don't want to change the piping. I implore that you expand your vision to more suitable and modern pumps. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, speaking on 8H, and on deck is Malcolm Williams, speaking on 8K.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue, HM and L. H is Oak Ridge. I know you're talking about the irrigation, but I'm talking about the landscaping. From what I understand, on the landscaping, the north side of the street, which is heavily landscaped, gets all the landscaping. And the south side of the street, which has virtually no landscaping, gets sable palms. All right? Hopefully, that area will increase in value. As I said, there are several very expensive hotels going in the area, the Hard Rock, the Plaza, the Marriott Renaissance. So to have a road, a major road that comes over to those areas without the best of landscaping is kind of a added new amount. I understand they're going to put monkey grass. Monkey grass looks terrible after the first wind. It splits the top of the grass. I know it's variegated, but it turns brown. It looks dirty and dingy. It is not something that you really want in a high wind area, and that is a wind tunnel. Secondly, Collins Park, asking that you put in child-friendly playground for 0- to 10-year-olds. I know we normally go for this esoteric, far expensive, unusual, that nobody uses. I've seen several families there. I asked them, they have little children. So for little things, those little five-foot-high slides and the steps and the things that little children use would be ideal for that park. So putting in those little, like we did at the Manatee Island, that nobody uses, or the stuff that we put in next to the library, which nobody uses, I would ask that you put in something that the children will use. And third, on the HUD housing off of Clyde Morris, we have yet to discuss affordable housing. At some point, we, the public, have a right to find out what you all are thinking and what you all are planning, and to have input. We have yet to discuss that, and the mayor says we've been pushing this for eight years. At some point, is it affordable housing? Is it workforce housing? Is it homes only? What are we talking about? At some point, we have to discuss it. Thank you.
I just want to say that at some point, I hope everyone hears it, it's all of those things, and then more. That's just what it is. Okay? And we can talk about it, can have a workshop, can have a community meeting, but it's all of those things. Okay?
I have our final speaker for the consent agenda is Mr. Malcolm Williams, speaking on 8K.
Good evening, everybody. I want to talk about the beach street for a minute, and I don't know if this is in this particular proposal, but I go to the wine walk. The wine walk, the last wine walk we had was absolutely amazing. It was really good. We was out there pretty much all day, had a good time. But we noticed some things in that wine walk. Is that, A, there's not enough trash cans out there, and there's not enough seats. And we're talking about events that cannot afford or don't have it in there to have seating areas, bring in seating areas, things like that. So I just wanted to make that notion and put that in your ear, if there's something that can be designed in that project as well, to put permanent seats out there and put more garbage cans out there that's included in the design. Another thing, we're talking about the Espinade, I don't know if it's in there too as well, but I haven't heard it being said. I think it'd be a great idea, something to think about and inputting to your ears, to have a partnership with the city of Orlando and get some swans out there. I think it'd be a great addition to our city, a great addition for our people to go out there, feed the swans. We see what Lake Yola is doing with their swans. I just, again, just put it in your ear to have something out there that the city of Daytona can be proud of as well. So I just wanted to put that bug in your ear, but we really do need some seats and some trash cans out there, and I don't know if that's included in the design already. But thank you.
Thank you.
That's my next speaker for the consent agenda.
Do we have any comments from the commission concerning the consent agenda? All right, we have a motion and a second. Oh, do we not have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we now have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Moving on, we have no public hearing items. Moving on to the item number 10, which is the administrative items, we're going to take the item 10A first. It's a legal department memorandum of understanding opioid settlement proceeds. This is a resolution. A resolution authorizing city of Daytona Beach to join the state of Florida and other local governmental units as a participant in the Florida memorandum of understanding and formal agreements implementing a unified plan for resolution of the opioid litigation and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Now, we have a speaker.
If I might introduce our speaker, this is Mr. Eric Romano, and also provide some background. The city commission authorized the city to be involved in a, really a statewide and a nationwide consortium of suits against the opioid distributors and sellers and manufacturers. Mr. Romano is our lead counsel in that lawsuit. What is before you tonight is approval of a memorandum of understanding between all of the local jurisdictions and state and county to approve the allocation of funds from proposed settlement. So, Mr. Romano?
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Eric Romano. I'm with Romano Law Group in West Palm Beach, and along with my co-counsel, it is our honor to represent the city in the opioid litigation, which is part of the national opioid litigation, joined with approximately 2,200 other local governments around the country that are seeking to hold the pharmaceutical industry accountable for the opioid epidemic that has affected communities all over the country, including Daytona Beach. I'll give just a brief update on the litigation. There is a, one of the bellwether or lead trials is underway right now in West Virginia, and these are some of the cases that the presiding judge picks to put in front of a jury, present the evidence, ultimately to help guide further negotiations, developments in the case. Over the last couple of years, since we filed suit on behalf of the city, the parties representing local governments, representing states through their attorney general's offices, and the defendants have been engaged in very comprehensive negotiations in anticipation of likely settlements in the near future with some or all of the defendants. Local governments throughout Florida have been in negotiations with the Florida Attorney General's Office to try to reach an agreement to allocate whatever national settlement funds ultimately will come back to the state of Florida. We do anticipate that there will be some national settlement funds that will come to the state. The question then becomes if and when we reach those settlements and those funds come back to the state, how do those funds get allocated between the cities, the counties, and the state of Florida? So with that in mind, these negotiations have now led to the development of this memorandum of understanding that representatives of local governments around the state have believed is in the best interest of local governments, that's through negotiations with the Attorney General's Office, and this lays out the basic parameters of how funds, how any settlement funds would be allocated. And to be clear, there are no settlements yet, but things are trending in that direction. We think we may get there at some point, maybe after a few more bellwether trials. So, and that is the purpose of the resolution, asking this commission to approve the memorandum of understanding, which allows us to kind of continue the negotiations and hopefully try to bring much-needed resources back here to the city.
All right. Do we have any questions? It's good to see this moving forward and in the rapid progress that it has made. I recall when we first started down this road, it was, we got on the journey real quick, but it's something that has, you know, it's a scourge, a bane in our community and across this country. So we appreciate the work that you all are doing to help bring about justice as it relates to it.
Yes, sir. We thank you and the commissioners for putting your trust in us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any additional questions or comments?
Any public?
Public comment? Yeah. I don't think she...
I've had no one sign up for this item.
Yeah, okay. We have no public comment. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to go ahead and move back to item number 11, which is the discussion on the citizen comments.
Okay.
Didn't we have a beat? Was beat full?
No, we're going to take the after this.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll start out the discussion, since I was the person that sent this to the manager, and it's clear that we've had, ever since we decided to take this out of the public meeting, a steady stream of people asking that it be returned. While I was never in favor of taking it out, I understood the rationale and the feelings of the commission. I would say that I was wrong for not being more forthright and stronger in my opposition. It was at best a tacit opposition as opposed to my normal, strong position. But didn't matter, I didn't have the votes, but either way, I should have been a stronger voice for keeping it as a part of public comment. I understand, and I, you know, the commission gets frustrated because this is a business meeting, and when you have people parading in front of the microphone, just as we're going to discuss some issues later tonight about how your image matters and how you do business matters to people who are interested in your community. So the commission recognized and felt that the way that we were doing business as a community was discouraging to others, and that's part of the rationale, I think, as to why it was moved. Whether that justifies it or not, we will decide that in just a moment. But what I will say is that I have never seen anyone who came and campaigned, and that was a lot of it. We've had people come and they campaigned with their signs, and they say, they call, they tell us that we're here for, you know, the poopy water syndrome was a large part of the last campaign, which was a completely false narrative that was constantly stated from that side to support candidates and to support the opposing people who were elected. And that became a frustrating phenomenon, and it became a distraction. But I've never seen anyone win an election from that side, from standing over there campaigning. And I've been up here, you know, almost 10, 12 years. I've never seen anyone do that. And so I just want to remind our citizens that that's not how you win elections. You know, you have a voice, you have a message, give it to the people and see, let them make the decision. And so my position is, let's find a way to put it back into the public meeting, but let's not entertain shenanigans. We do have cameras. We want the voices to be heard and the people to be heard, but if you have some sort of ridiculous message where you're trying to send off another message, then maybe we'll have a way to address that. But that's my position, and that's the reason I was acquiesced multiple times, over and over, as most of you have been, to return this to the agenda, and I believe it's the right thing to do. And I think we should have a discussion to see if you all agree. And also, we have a new commissioner who wasn't here when that was decided. I felt that she should have an opportunity to weigh in on that as to whether that should be a part of the meeting. We, before, we had the same people. That was a decision we had made. Got a new person. Let's see if we have a different position at this time. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I wasn't here when that was made.
Oh, okay. My apologies. Didn't remember that. Okay. All right. Anyone else? Any other comments? So, well, no comments?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we have to take into public comment.
My first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I really don't recall you all speaking publicly about why it was removed. I do remember Fred holding his sign and irritating the heck of you guys. There's only one person who I ever recalled holding up a sign, elect Fred, or his email or something, the second sign he held up. So there was only one person that really did that. Secondly, there was only one person that really attacked the members of the commission. And she's not here anymore, so I don't think there's any more attacks to you individually. The idea that the public literally was not allowed to speak at the city commission meeting was always an irritant with me. Secondly, that the cameras were turned off. Third, that you couldn't hear, basically, the give and take. To me, the public has a right to come and express themselves, whether you like it or not. All right? I mentioned it to the new city manager that we might not get along, and he said, oh, don't worry about that, which is the same with each and every one of you. We may not get along, okay? And I know we don't. But other people have a right to come up and speak. Whether you get along with me or not is irrelevant. You have to deal with them as well, and most of them have issues. So I'm asking you to put this back in and to make it a three-minute. Because two and a half, I did debate in high school and college, three minutes is extenuating speaking. Two and a half is just a heck too short. Thank you.
May I say something?
Yes.
That was one of the first things when I got elected. It was two minutes. I wanted to make it three minutes again, but we ended up compromising it two and a half. That's how come we have a strange number.
Okay. We can do that.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I'm here tonight to address the fact that you took away our minutes from us, because when all of you took off, except the ones who came in late, we had three minutes before and three after. You changed that and took them all away under the old city manager. Then you gave us two minutes back, and Ruth Traeger came here and advocated for 30 more seconds. She got that done. She wanted the three minutes, but Pam Woods made a motion just to make it 30 seconds. So I see this as discrimination, because it was never addressed in this meeting, and there was no one up there making personal attacks on you. You are here to do the people's business, and other cities have never, ever taken their people off the agenda. You turn off the cameras and let us speak when these cameras are off. I see this as a personal attack on the taxpayer and residents of the city of Daytona Beach, and you are denying the residents the opportunity to have the comments heard in city commission meetings. And as a former president of the Daytona Beach branch of the NAACP, and speaking today as a public citizen, I see this as hardcore discrimination. And I expected you, when you were elected, to represent the residents and not take away our freedom of speech. So I've been to many meetings, and I see this as a level of policing our residents, and this was a very bad decision that you made against us. And Derrick Henry, you are aware of the fact that I advocated at the meetings for you to be sitting in the very seat that you're sitting in, especially elections. Put all the names on the table, let the people... The people have a voice, and you are here to do our work. So I will say to you tonight that you need to put our residents back in the meeting. You should have never taken them out. The people who made the decision to do this is no longer here. Kelly White and Yellowland, they went complaining to the city manager, because they didn't act what the residents were saying. But we don't like a lot of things you do, but we have to listen anyway. So do your job and get us back in the meeting. Make it happen.
Oh, okay. I'm used to seeing that as well. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Johnson. Just one correction. That was the seat that you advocated when I was over in that seat, Zone 5, but we acknowledge your comments tonight. Do we have any other comments on this item?
I have a question. So in terms of end time for meetings, does that mean all of us are staying to the very end? So when we, we will, I'm not sure what the timeframe is. Our commission meetings sometimes, as they are right now, go until ten o'clock. Does that mean that they could be going longer and everybody then stays? We all stay, is that how it works?
What do you mean, we all, us?
Yeah, all of us stay for everything.
Well, it's customary that if you're a part of the commission, you stay until the
Exactly.
is over, until you, unless you have
No.
Like you might be later, once every ten years.
But I wasn't sure, I've stayed for every meeting, so my question is, my question is, what time do meetings end or they just go until they go, okay? Okay, fantastic. Okay? Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. All right, do we want to, do we have any other comments from the commission on this item? All right, do you want to make it three minutes also, or do you want to keep it two and a half minutes?
No, I'm comfortable with two and a half.
These two, you guys comfortable with two and a half? Tell me what you
I'm good with three.
Okay. You say two minutes in the audience? Anyone else? Ms. Traeger?
Well, it used to be three. We used to be here sometimes till two o'clock in the morning. I do remember that. And then they changed it to two. And I tried to get it back to three when I first got in. Like I said, we managed to compromise at two and a half. So I have no objection to go an extra thirty seconds.
Okay. I'm for three minutes.
All right.
I'm fine with that.
I'm for three minutes. So we are all in, we'll be in agreement that it's three minutes. And the last thing, should it be at the beginning of the meeting or the end of the meeting? I prefer personally the end of the meeting. Some people, I've heard from both people. Some like it in the middle, in the beginning, some like it at the end. I prefer it at the end. But what do you all?
I see both ways, I mean, in the beginning, you can hear what people have to say and that might inform what's happening throughout that meeting, but at the same time, having it at the end also makes some sense too. Particularly because it's hard to predict how long public comment's gonna go. And then if you have people who are coming in to make a presentation or something like that, it can kind of skew the evening. So my personal thought is, at the end makes the most sense as far as being able to organize and plan for presentations and things like that. Otherwise, I think it'd be an unpredictable time period. So I would vote to keep it at the, at the end where we had it originally, when I joined the commission. I don't know if that's where it's always been. That would be, make it three minutes, but keep it at the, at the end like we had it originally.
You have to remember, people can still speak on the consent agenda and then you can speak on the items as they're in the meeting that you have a right to speak on anyway. So then if it's at the end, you can kind of summarize all of your thoughts and complaints into one, or your solutions into one synopsis. Which I
I agree with that.
Prefer. Yeah. Okay.
Because you can already speak on the items, so.
Before? Okay, one other question then. So we agreed and it's at the end, is it before the commission comments or after the commission comments?
After.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna just all talk out. Because you told us over the years what you, they come from different angles. What's your, your position, you say, you say what commissioner?
I said after.
After commission?
Comments.
Anyone else, Commissioner Henry, after? Okay.
Ms. Mayor, I'm tending towards after, just for the same reason we talked about before. The unpredictability of the timing of it and the length of it. That's my only thought.
Okay. All right, anyone else? After or before? Okay, with after. Just, okay, I'm good with after. I don't, it doesn't matter.
Ms. Mayor, did we talk about whether it was gonna be video, audio, the whole? I mean, is that part of the motion too, whether we're gonna, you know, have it videotaped? Or is that part of what we need to talk about? Because right now, it's my understanding that it's audio only and then we display the, kind of a static banner, right? From home? Is that how we're gonna keep it, or do we want to take it back up to being, you know, video? I think if it's, if it's not video, then the temptation to bring a sign or something like that is obviously nullified. So I don't know if that's a compromise that makes sense. I don't, I mean, I don't know that being seen makes a huge difference. Obviously, if people want to be seen, then, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna rail at that. But I didn't know what we were thinking about doing, if we're gonna change that or keep it the same. I'm perfectly fine either way. But if I wasn't present for the sign era, it's always kind of been this way, I think. Or the majority of my time in the commission has been this way. So I don't know what it was like when it was that way. But if people are really interested in getting their point across, I don't know that they have to be broadcasted on TV to the home to really make the same impact if they're trying to address us. So I'm ambivalent really between the two. I just don't know what the other commissioners think and I'm open to being guided by their input on that.
I believe they should be videoed because, I mean, it's part of the meeting and we're just gonna hear the same thing that they're not being videoed and they're gonna have their cameras doing their own.
If it's, if we're gonna put it back in the meeting, it's actually a part of the meeting. We can't just take that last part of the meeting and say, well, we're gonna do something different. It has to be cohesive, the whole meeting. I think it, it has to be a part and it has to be videoed.
I would like to suggest however, though, if we do run into the situation that caused us to make the decision we made the last time, where they're not being seen, that there be something that the IT staff can do that would block that.
We can't do that, I don't think, because of First Amendment.
You can't do that?
Either you're doing it or not, but I let Bob, I don't know. You tell us.
Well, two things to keep in mind here is, there's no right to public comment at the end of the meeting. There's a right to speak on items that come before you for a vote. So there's no right to speak whatsoever in this forum. And additionally, you know, given there's no right in the first place, there's no right to be on TV either. So it's certainly within the commission's discretion to only play video.
Yeah, but how do we determine, you know, you're asking
Or audio.
A person to choose what to censor? Sort of.
I guess we're gonna say that, that you can, you can't have any, you know, visual aids that are not pre-submitted or not approved or not germane to the topic that you're speaking on. If you want to bring up a picture that's relevant to the issue you're speaking on, that'd be fine, but if you have a plaque that says vote for X, Y, or Z person, that's probably not the topic you're speaking on. So, I mean, you could just limit the visual aids to be, you say no visual aids that are not consistent with the topic that you're speaking on. And that would eliminate the elections. I think if they want to wear a button or a shirt, that's, that's fine.
So this is actually where you do get into First Amendment issues. You know, once you allow people to speak, you run into issues when you start censoring. Now, I do believe, and we can confirm this with IT, there's a second, several second delays so that they do bleep out, you know, inappropriate words, file language. But beyond that, I think you might run into problems with First Amendment if you, if you not allow certain types of speech. I have known other jurisdictions where they do create rules like you're speaking of, Mr. Delgado. But they are content neutral, of course, so they would be something like, no
No visual aids at all?
Either no visual aids or no sticks with signs for safety reasons. So, you know, you certainly can create rules, but they would have to be content neutral. You would not want a rule that says, for instance, no political speech.
So there's no visual aids? No visual aids, is that?
No visual aids would certainly be a rule that would be content neutral and could be enforced.
I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill, Mr. Mayor, if it's not that big of a deal.
You run to the issue as a shirt of visual aid, you know, that you have other issues in terms of interpretation.
Mr. Manager?
Also, if you get to the point where the resident would like to provide a visual aid to the commission, I think it would be appropriate if that visual aid was provided to the city clerk and she could disseminate it to the elected officials in a meeting. That makes it much easier if someone's trying to bring something to present to the elected officials.
And that's the same way that we would do with anyone else who's coming, because we have to remember, the purpose of this was, it's a business meeting. It's not to come and parade in front of, you know, the public, just various ideologies of, you know, lunacy sometimes. And it's been much different than just to say, someone who brought a sign. We've had some very, you know, strange ideologists postulated from that podium. And they were not about the business of moving this city forward. You know, and that's, you know, really my purpose here, is to do business and to get us going where we need to go. So I think that's appropriate, what the manager and Tisha's saying. So.
So, just so I'm clear, what will the motion be with regard to video? Will it allow video or just?
Allow, allow, allow video, but no, all handouts have to be pre-submitted or all handouts have to be?
They go through the clerk?
Hand it to the city clerk?
Yeah. And, yeah, okay. And we have to leave the sign part alone. You have to allow people to show their sign.
You don't have to allow, you could prohibit all signs, but I, I think it's cleaner probably just to allow them to come forward with their message and not get into that business. Because as I say, a T-shirt could have a message on it and you don't want to try to interpret, you know, whether that's a sign or not in the middle of your meeting.
Correct. I agree with that. Okay. Is, do we have clarification on what the motion is? I can't regurgitate it.
I can try to restate it if that would be helpful.
That would be good.
Okay, let me see how I do. And we'll need an amendment to the motion, assuming I state this correctly, since the original motion was just to move the item into the regular meeting.
Okay.
All right. So as I understand
You want to go first?
First? Okay.
Yeah, let him read it first.
All right. So as I understand, the motion would be to move the public comment to the regular meeting, it'd be at the end of the meeting and after city commission comments. And that the public speaking time would be limited to three minutes. And that the public comment would be videotaped and there'd be no restrictions for that videotaping.
We do have a clarity issue. Will the three minutes only be for the public speaking portion, or will it be part of the entire meeting? On items as well? Okay.
So three minutes across the board?
Yes.
No, no.
It's a valid question.
No, no, and I, and I don't know which one of us, out of you and I, but I don't know which of the two of us, the rest of them don't postulate quite as long as you and I.
Yes, but three minutes, no.
We have to own that. And I'm, I don't want to be, well, that's just on occasion, but most times, he says, good night.
Yeah.
But we have to own that. Okay. So, okay, and I don't intend to change that.
So I, I thought with the, I thought, by talking about the speaking aids, I thought that's how we would classify the political, the signage or whatever would be considered a visual aid. They'd have to go to Latisha ahead of time. Are we, are we doing that, are we just saying, no, we're not putting any? That was the only thing I was on, I mean.
He's saying no. You're saying no, we shouldn't do that because it just gets into free speech. We've only had, it's been more than one person. We had a few bring signs of different types. John only remembers Fred, but there were others who brought signs to get rid of Mr. Chisholm and different things. And others. So.
They had T-shirts and everything.
I just, I don't think we have that many signs, but we can't neutrally tell them just to not show that though, right? My issue is, what is projecting to the public and to people who are watching the message? But I, I say just leave it alone. It's just simple. Just be simple.
Because we can always revisit this. Just like we're visiting it tonight. Just give it a try. See if they behave themselves.
Ms. Cantor, do you want to make a motion?
Well, they say the same about us. I don't, don't expect that.
I can amend the first, the first motion.
Yeah, okay.
And then some, and then move the second.
Yeah, so you're amending your motion and I'm seconding your amended motion.
Correct.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and an amended motion and we have a second to vote. So all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Johnson. All right, we're gonna move to, before we take, right, we don't, we had something else, we have one more agenda.
We do have one more.
One more, and then we'll go to the next.
Sorry about that. So we're gonna move on to item 10B, which is City Manager's Office TPO Citizen Advisory Committee Appointment Resolution. A resolution recommending the appointment of Emily Nice as the representative for the city of Daytona Beach on the Citizens Advisory Committee of the River to Sea Transportation Planning Organization and providing contact with the
The Citizens Advisory Committee is a subcommittee of River to Sea Transportation Planning Organization. Recommendations for this committee is to come from our representative on the TPO Board, which is Commissioner Cornita May. The commissioner has received two individuals that are interested in serving on the committee. John Collins and Emily Nice.
Commissioner?
So this evening, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have a conversation where I'm listening to everybody, kind of weigh in on what they're looking for in that Citizens Advisory member. The position requires that the person have and can learn, and can learn different things related to planning and transportation, the impact of the city both long and short term with regard to transportation. And also, it takes place throughout the city, not just in one zone or the other, but throughout Daytona Beach. And so I'm interested to hear, you've looked at the resumes, they're on the back end of our agenda. I'm curious to hear what your thoughts are in that. I think because it's such an important position and I work with this person, I want their feedback and their comments that we decide as a group and then I'll make an appointment from there. Any comments?
You know, it's very nice of you that you like to do it that way, you're working with that person. But I really would prefer to defer to you, but both persons I know, and I find both of them to be highly qualified.
And that's my issue.
Deeply committed to making our city better, both of them.
I agree.
Sean has innumerable experiences in planning, but I know of no one who pays, well, maybe one or two people who pay as close to attention to details as Emily. I know she has a capacity to, to learn. I have confidence in both persons.
And so that's the position I'm in also, and so I had asked the attorney if we could have a primary and an alternate and how that would work exactly. If that's possible.
Oh, it's certainly possible, the TPO rules normally address that, but at your discretion, again, you can appoint a primary and alternate to attend those meetings when your primary was not available.
Okay, so what I would like to do is, I would like to choose that option with commission support, of course, and I would like to make Mr. Sean Collins primary with Ms. Emily Nice as secondary or the alternate. And when Mr. Collins cannot attend, I would very much like Ms. Nice to be involved in the process. Is that a possibility? I'd like to know if that's possible first.
Is it legally possible?
Yes.
It's legally possible.
Okay, then I'd like to make the motion that I make Mr. Collins the primary and make Ms. Nice the alternate.
All right, you have a motion, you have a second? Do we have any other comments or any public comments?
I have no public comments on this.
I just wanted to add that both individuals, I requested the resume of both individuals. They're both public record and you can take a look at how that decision was made based on that information. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. We're gonna move back to the item that was compiled from the consent agenda, item 8M, the Development Administrative Services Atlantic Housing Development Incentive Agreement Resolution. A resolution approving an incentive agreement between the city of Daytona Beach and Clyde Morris Landings Partners LTD in relation to the Clyde Morris Landings apartment complex currently under construction on the east side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, south of LPGA Boulevard, providing for an annual city grant to CLM Partners for a fifteen-year grant period subject to certain conditions, including CLM Partners' agreement to set aside two hundred and sixteen of the apartments located within the apartment complex as affordable housing throughout the grant period. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and providing an effective date.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Well, I'm glad that the city manager decided to pull this from the agenda. That was his decision and it was done before the meeting. I know tonight, we have a lot of people here that are here to talk about other issues. But I really want you all to know that this is about as good as it gets for us in terms of our agenda. The stated agenda of what we want to accomplish as a commission. You're talking You're talking about 304 units that will be made affordable at one time. And it is a big commitment from the city in terms of tax abatement, but I know of no greater problem. All you have to do is talk to people. And if you don't talk to anyone, just look at the wages. Look at, look at the wages that people earn, and then look at the rental, the price of rent. And that should tell us enough, that when someone comes in and they want to oppose the fact that we are committed to this process, then we should recognize that they oppose the people who live here. They oppose the general people who live here having a place to live and, and a reasonable and decent place to live. And so, Mr. Manager, I know you-
Yeah. Mayor, that is one of the key things that many of you spoke about during the interview process, and that is something that we're trying to accelerate, not only affordable housing, but workforce housing and housing for a higher end. And one of the things that staff has been doing is working with different individuals to accomplish your agendas in that regard. So I just want Mr. Morris to come up and just provide some insight on this particular item and what we're trying to do to make sure that we have all spectrums of housing in Daytona Beach.
Deputy City Manager, in respect to the item on the agenda now, Mayor, you talked about goals and objectives of the commission. In the early in the discussion regarding this subject, you stated an initial goal that you had of 1,000 units. It's a, a number I know that you thought of as one that's appropriate, and as it relates to studying housing in need, we have that coming up soon for the commission to consider appointing a study. But here what we have is for a sum of $60,000 per year maximum exposure for the city to provide 216 units that are affordable housing units. There's additional senior housing in the same project that is not included in the 216. The exposure for the city over a 15-year period is roughly $900,000. But for that, there's 15 years of affordable housing. The way it's handled is audited, so you have evidence that the expenditures that the city is agreeing to make is in fact spent for that purpose. The money generated, the $60,000, is actually generated by the taxes that would be paid by this project and then circled back in. And when you look at your agenda item that's set out at 8M, there's some key points. Not to exceed $60,000 annually. Rental rates not exceeding 30% limits established by HUD for low income, very low income, or extremely low income households. Perhaps even as important is the fact that this project, the property, is next to B-Brawn, but you're out in the middle of the area where workers are needed. And affordable housing, one of the standards is that you would have a relatively short transport from where you live to where you work. This is not the one-mile limit, but I think in today's world, the one-mile idea is probably a little bit outdated because cities are spread out further than that. But I think the end conclusion that must be reached by everyone, that this is a bargain in terms of providing the desire the commission has stated to provide affordable housing. For $60,000 expenditure, there are 216 units on call. That's an annual cost, but the, it's a not-to-exceed number. So when you look at the outcome for the expense, I think it's one of the better bargains the commission will see. And I know, Mayor, you led the way in discussions early on this, because I've heard a lot of comments that have come through. I simply think it's the right thing to do, the right time to do it, and it's just the beginning of, I think, what the commission will accomplish as you move forward. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any additional questions?
I do have Mr. Mark Watts here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Mark, you have any questions?
Mayor, excuse me, there was one point the city attorney raised that I should have mentioned. I apologize for not doing that sooner. The agreement that we have here is stated upon a contingency that the county council also supports the project. And in your prior comments, you had said, I believe, and please correct me if I misquote you, that you thought the county should contribute equivalency to what the city contributes because it's a county-wide, not just a city-wide problem. This agreement provides for that.
Uh, and, and what I, what I am really saying, and I stated in the newspaper this week, is that we could use 10, I didn't mean all 10 in Daytona Beach, but I, I mean that it's a county-wide problem, something that we need, and my hope is that this would be a standard going forward between city, cities and the county to help address this problem. I was on the phone recently with Mayor Abgar from Deland, who was asking questions and who I think immediately got on the phone and probably called Mark Watts, trying to figure out how he could piggyback and get a similar type project done in, in, in Deland. And if you have, you have another, I, I'm not going to say we, we could afford, because this is just beginning to, to, to touch the need of what we need. But, but certainly, I, I agree.
And with this action tonight, the county council is expected to take action after you. They were waiting to see what Daytona Beach's lead would be, so you're leading the way.
All right. Good. Thanks.
So I have a couple of questions. Maybe it's for Mr. Watts. About, first question is, at the end of 15 years, what happens potentially? So we go with affordable housing for 15 years, here 16 happens. What are the options in year 16 when people have become comfortable in this particular area? What happens next?
So for the record, Mark Watts with Law from Cobb Cole, 231 North Woodland Boulevard, Deland. Here on behalf of Atlantic Housing Partners, I've got Scott Kulp, who's the president, here with me as well. So I may get Scott up here to answer some of the technical details on this. There's, there's a number of different functions and factors that go into how these projects are now financed. One of the things that we've seen and, and we've talked about, Mr. Mayor, and some of our conversations over the past year or two about this, this particular topic is, you know, Sodowsky funds and other resources going away. And so Atlantic Housing has developed over 40,000 units of affordable housing, you know, throughout mostly Florida, some into, into some of the surrounding states. They still own and manage 20,000 to 25,000 units throughout the state of Florida. There are Volusia County Housing Finance Authority bonds that are part of the financing picture here. Those bonds are 30-year bonds, and so they're basically, as long as those bonds are outstanding, there's a 30-year commitment for them to remain affordable housing units. That's for the 216. Now, there is an opportunity at year 15 for a refinance that would take those bonds out and would get rid of the, basically the bond covenants that guarantee that continuing affordability. And that's why we limited the request here to 15 years, because while in all likelihood they may remain affordable for that full 30-year period, there's a possibility there could be a refinance at year 15. And so that's why we, we've limited this to 15. So the expectation, to answer your question, is if the bond covenants stay in place, then it's an additional 15 years beyond that of the remaining affordable units. If it's refinanced, then it would, would be at, you know, the option to go to either market rate or continue as affordable.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I just want us to be aware of that. All right? Other thing is, I'm good, thank you, sir. I will tell you that about two years ago was when this project started. Is that right? About two years ago? So two years ago, I took the time to drive to three different locations that you had. One was a five-year project, one was a 10-year project, one, I think, was a 15- or 20-year project. I noticed that the property was interspersed with the new D.R. Horton projects, then 88-unit senior housing, almost exactly what's being planned here. And my concern was what it would look like 10 years from now or 15 years from now in terms of wear and tear. I was pleasantly surprised after going to the first newer version, and then 10, and then 15-plus years, well-maintained, lots of maintenance. I spoke with a few of the residents that didn't know it was coming, and I took a few tours as well. I was happily surprised at what I saw. So yes, I'm quite looking forward to this, and I'm hoping that when year 16 comes, that we won't need it anymore. That's my hope.
I, I think it's a great observation, and this, this, they're not a new, new developer for the community here. They've been in Daytona, I think the first project that I worked on with, with Atlantic Housing was about 15 years ago with Kate Morris Cove, the apartment complex down at, what was it, Big Tree and Clyde Morris?
The units I went to were actually in Orange City. They were in Orange City.
At Park Hill, which is another recent project that's, that's been developed. But, you know, one of the covenants that, that you have when you, when you, when they do the bond financing and other strategies that Atlantic Housing uses, is they have to own and maintain it. And so knowing that they're, they're going to be on, you know, the hook for the maintenance costs over a 30-year period, tend to build better upfront than somebody that's going to, you know, stabilize an apartment community and flip it. So I, I just want to thank all of you and thank, thank your staff for all the time and effort that's been put into this. And, you know, we appreciate the, the ability to be here this, this evening with hopefully with something. And I did get a call, I think five minutes after he hung up with you, I did talk with Mayor Abgar, and I think, you know, notice is being taken of what you're proposing here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we have a motion, we have a second. I will say that you guys are very professional and detailed, and I appreciate you, both of you, and your patience, because I realize that, you know, you know, we're, you're up against a deadline and this, this needs to happen, and, you know, it's taken us a while to get here. But, you know, thank you for being here. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, no further comment. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. All right.
For the record, there was no public comment on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Guess it's on me. Before we go to public comment, we realize that we have a, a large crowd tonight because we've had some events that take place, or an, an event that take place in our city that has left our community frustrated, marginally disgusted. We are joined tonight by Mayor Miller from Daytona Beach shores, as well as our county councilwoman, Representative Billy Wheeler, both of whom, I think, just like all of us up here, were inundated with phone calls, and, you know, you name it, we received it. I have not had one issue since I have been elected that I think was more intense and problematic for residents on one occasion than this issue. With that being said, though, a lot of people have started to post and sent a message that the city is burning down. The city is falling apart. I would remind you all that when Mary McCloud-Bethune decided to build Bethune-Cookman, there were a group of clansmen who visited her and told her that they were going to burn her school down. She told them that if you burn my school down, I will build it again. And the school. I will remind you that in 1946, when Jackie Robinson got ready to play baseball here, a lot of people said, "Hell, no, not in Daytona Beach." People came together, along with Dr. Bethune, and history was made. I will remind you that when the Speedway was being constructed, it took a lot of collaboration in this community. And when we needed to turn the Speedway and the race track, the Speedway, as well as the airport over to the county for better, more potent stewardship, we got through all of that. And then I remind you guys, five years ago, at 250 North Beach Street, when we were inundated with homeless people and they took over 250. And then two years after that, every street corner in Daytona Beach had a homeless person on, oh, on, on it, pretty much. Or not a homeless person, but a panhandler. And we got through all of that, and we got through spring break, and we got through BCR. We got through all of these things, and we will get through trucks. Now, and I want to remind you all that, that trucks will not be solved tonight. No matter what you say, no matter what we say, this issue, this item, this problem will not be solved tonight. So if you choose, when you get your three minutes, to all speak and say what we will see in just a moment, then that's, yes, you're right, but let's remember that no matter what you say, it's not going to be solved. I want to commend our city manager, our police chief in the police department, but our city manager first because he didn't wait. Soon as the fire started burning, he got his fire hose out and started to try to put out the fires best he could by reaching out to the promoter, reaching out to the Speedway authorities, and beginning the process. Now, they also reached out to me, but I will be honest with you all. And I did not reach back, because what I felt needed to transpire in our community, for us who were elected, we needed to feel the burn. We needed to feel, and I needed to know what the residents were saying. And I needed to make sure that I heard and experienced what you experienced. Both of us, we were together on Friday night on beachside. I went back on Sunday to see it, to live it, and I had my own experiences with the trucks, even on Derbyshire. So I know the experience. And so I say all of that to say that they are committed to getting this right, one way or the other. They are not committed to one policy or the other, whether the event returns or not. But the Speedway, we have to remember, is a great steward in our community, and they've had a great reputation and a great heritage of working with the city to be successful. So they are not our enemies. They're not an enemy of the community, they are our partners. And rather we, and I, and here was my position to them, and the city manager's stewardship today, we met with their leadership, and I've told them that I would, I wanted this to be public. I wanted the public to have a, a voice. I also want the public eventually to be able to weigh in, in a public forum, about their feelings about what we need to do as it relates to events like this. I don't know how that should look, but I think they should hear it, and I think that, I know I should hear it, not just in this setting. What troubles me about all of this is this. I told them, well, first let me go back to that, that I didn't know if I would ever be able to support the return of this event. But we acknowledge their right to have the event. And, but the reality is that it, it might not be with our city blessing. But if they chose to do it ultimately, we certainly were going to work with them to try to ensure that it was successful. But if it's decided, for whatever reason, and we continue with it for another season, and it doesn't work, you know, part of the question was, well, when does it end? Because we are an events town. And we can't deny that. We are an events town. But not all events are the same. I think we decided that in the 30 years ago with BCR and bike, and spring break. You know, we decided that some events weren't just, weren't best for us. And so we, we kind of, kind of know what our standard is. And so tonight, what I want to do before I turn this part of the meeting over to the city manager is that, let me make sure I get her name down. Chelsea is here, Parcell, who is a resident of Daytona Beach. And she has a marketing background, and she created a video that sort of went viral. And it might be sort of painful for some of us to watch, but I, I just think that we ought to be transparent about what we're facing and about what our conversation is about. And we're not hiding anything, because if we're going to solve anything, we have to be upfront about it. So at this time, we will watch the video. The manager and his staff will then present the facts from their perspective, and then we will hear from, well, your remarks are after our remarks. So then we'll hear from the commission, and then we will hear from you. So if you guys would go ahead and chew the video up and- We don't want any sound. Okay, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, um, Mayor and Commissioners. As he stated, um, when we look at those videos, we have to ask the question, um, what is our brand? What do we want people to recognize about, um, the city of Daytona Beach? Um, and listening to the elected officials, I understand that I would like to, um, commend the chief and the deputy chief, um, in their preparation for this event. They were not prepared for individuals that did not want to respect our community. They were not prepared for individuals that did not want to abide by the, the law, so to speak. But they were ready to deal with them, um, when they did get here. And the chief provided to the elected officials a memorandum. Um, and I just want the chief to, um, after, um, the city attorney, I'm gonna allow for him to provide details on what, um, is allowed at the Speedway based on, um, their PD, and what roles we have as an organization to deal with this. As the mayor stated, we were out there on Friday, um, Friday evening, um, pretty late, just to see what was taking place. And, um, once I saw what was taking place, I, um, um, decided I needed to contact the representatives at the Speedway, um, just to say, is this the brand, um, that you want to, um, show to the world about the Daytona International Speedway and about NASCAR? And they don't like it. They, they don't appreciate, um, that being attached to them. And so, and the mayor was very succinct in his conversations, um, with members of the leadership team today. This is unacceptable in our community. Um, and so I, I am mindful, um, because I got up, um, and late at night when the, the, the police chief is out to four and five in the morning, and I, so I wanted to see at two o'clock in the morning, really what people who live on the beachside was experiencing. And it's unacceptable. Um, and so I want the, um, the city attorney, um, to make some comments, and then the chief will come up and give an update on what took place, and his expectations for how we deal with these, um, type of events going forward.
All right.
Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Fietre, yes. Um, just to lay the, the framework, if you will, for events out at the Speedway, uh, you have a planned master development agreement, which is your zoning document for the Speedway. It authorizes them to conduct events such as the truck event, um, festivals, uh, concerts, et cetera. They have fairly broad authority to conduct public events, uh, within the Speedway property. Uh, they are required to give the city twenty days' notice prior to the event, which presumably is to allow the city to plan, uh, for its law enforcement and traffic control activities. Uh, the city also has a mutual aid agreement with other local law enforcement agencies, which allows them to work in conjunction with, with other jurisdictions. And, and that was, uh, used for the truck event, and other jurisdictions were involved in, in law enforcement within the city under that mutual aid agreement. Um, there are no permits required from the city for the Speedway to conduct this type of event, uh, because, again, all their authorizations are within their planned, uh, PD agreement. Um, finally, the, um, the Speedway has a, a process, if you will, of working with the city to provide for extra duty officers to assist in crowd control and traffic for their event. And they will contact, uh, the city prior to the event and, uh, enter into agreement with the city to provide those extra duty officers. And again, that did occur in this case. So that's essentially your, your legal framework for events out there. I, I want to add that I have talked to many of you privately about, uh, law enforcement issues during the event, and, and of course, there are many questions about, you know, what could be done. And I've looked into those issues, and, uh, be glad to, uh, continue those conversations with the police department, with Mr. Fietre. But, uh, some of the issues we've looked at in terms of law enforcement are the ability to impound vehicles, which are unsafe or hazardous, uh, and certainly that may be an issue with the condition of some of these trucks, which are lifted very high or have bumpers that are too high. So that is something we can follow up with in terms of, uh, making, uh, citation and impoundment. Uh, we've looked into, um, obviously, traffic control issues and, and the city's authority to maintain traffic in such emergency conditions. And we do have full home, home rule authority, uh, to, um, maintain the peace and order within the city. Again, something I'll be glad to share our comments with the PD and Mr. Fietre in terms of what we can do in the future to help maintain that control in a lawful way. Um, the mayor, of course, always has his authority to declare an emergency, which we did for COVID, of course, and to use emergency measures, uh, and, and among those being to issue curfews and close streets or sections of the city. So that is another option that's available, uh, in the instance of the, that declaration. And finally, you know, we do have traffic citations, which are generally not arrestable offenses, but have been enforced in this case, and you've all seen those numbers. And we do have, um, noise offenses, which, again, were used in this case and are applicable for revving engines or, um, unreasonable sounds in residential areas. So that's essentially the, the framework and, and the, um, parameters that law enforcement can work within, in addition to their overall law enforcement authority to make arrests for crimes, which, of course, occurred as well.
One, one other question. I asked you a question, I think, this week about our capacity to compel them to pay for our extra law enforcement.
Right.
Uh, what, could you speak to that?
So that is being done, to some extent, uh, through those, um, extra duty officer agreements that we have, uh, with the Speedway. So there is some coordination based on the notice, uh, for how many officers are, uh, to come out and provide that extra duty service. And, um, so that is being coordinated, coordinated with the Speedway. There is no legal requirement at the moment, uh, for them to engage in that conversation or to enter into those agreements, because their authority rests within their PD. Um, however, if they have an issue with the crowd, uh, the practice has been for them to, and anticipate an issue, I should say. The practice has been for them to come to the city and request those extra officers and to pay for those costs as part of that request.
So there's no change that we could make to our land development code that would cause for that, or we feel comfortable with where we are? Or, you know, and I'm not saying that we have to, but I just want all options to be available for us.
That is an issue I'd have to look into further, as to whether you could amend your code to require, um, payment for those additional costs. I can tell the, tell you that your PD agreement certainly anticipated large events out there. And so there, there may be a legal issue as to whether you could or not, but I'll be glad to look into that and, uh, and give you that information as to whether or not you can make that an actual legal requirement, that if there were an anticipated impact, uh, to traffic or to crowd outside of the stadium, that you could impose those costs upon the Speedway.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the chief, um, if you are ready to come forward, um, I know you've been working, and thank you for giving me a nice welcome, um, to Daytona Beach. You, you, you didn't give me the welcome, but they tried to.
I was ready. I've been ready since Saturday night to be up here today. Uh, so first off, Jakari Young, Police Chief, thank you, Commission, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, for the opportunity just to come up and, um, give you my views and opinions on this event. Um, where, where do I begin? We, we just watched that video.
That's tame.
That video was painful. That video is offensive. These residents behind me deserve better than what's in that video. I, I want to first start by thanking my men and women, the men and women of the Daytona Beach Police Department, for what they had to endure and persevere through this past weekend, because it was a lot. Um, I also want to thank all the outside agencies that sent resources in to assist. Those agencies were the Volusia Sheriff's Office, the Flagler Sheriff's Office, Edgewater Police Department, the New Smyrna Police Department, South Daytona, and the Flagler Beach Police Department. The county could send a few more than others. Some were only able to send a handful of officers, but obviously, we needed all they were able to spare. So I just want to kind of give a brief timeline, and then I'll, I'll dive into more of my personal views and opinions on this event. So this event was scheduled, and we planned for the weekend. We planned for June eleventh through the thirteenth. However, we started receiving complaints on June eighth. We started receiving complaints early in the week, that the trucks were in town, the noise was kicking up, the smoke, the train horns. So then I had to devise a plan to bring cops in, that I knew I had already canceled their weekend. They were already gonna work all weekend. So now I have to tell them, hey, listen, guys, I know I told you, you can be off Wednesday, Thursday, but I need you in early. I need you to come in now Wednesday and Thursday and take up, you know, a position in the city, so that we can curtail what's going on, so that we can curtail some of these parking lot parties. So I literally canceled days off for this event. Let me paint a picture of what that looks like. So I had cops that worked last week, twelve-hour shift on Wednesday, another twelve-hour shift on Thursday, and then they had to turn around and report to the Ocean Center at noon on Friday. And they worked a sixteen-hour shift on Friday. And then they turned around and had to meet me back at the Ocean Center for another sixteen-hour shift on Saturday, and then turn around and be back at the Ocean Center, twelve noon on Sunday. And I can only do so much to keep these folks motivated. I think I'm a pretty good motivational speaker. I told them, as long as that small hand on the clock keeps ticking, we're gonna make it through. But as far as my numbers go, on Friday, I had a total of two hundred and thirty-eight. On Saturday, I had a total of two hundred and seventy-six, and on Sunday, I had, I was down to a hundred and fifty-seven. So I had roughly three hundred cops, three hundred cops, and that includes the outside agencies that since, that sent their folks to help. I had roughly three hundred cops to manage approximately forty to fifty thousand people over there on that beachside. So there was no break for them. There was no, and then when you look at a video like that, and you see somebody getting beaten in the middle of the street, and you say, well, where's the cop? I promise you, they were dealing with something else. We couldn't be everywhere. We couldn't be everywhere. It, it was rough for them. And let me tell you something. We are not the police department that you remember from the eighties, nineties, and two thousands. We have evolved. We do not police that way anymore. This is a different generation. This is a different generation. I don't think you guys want us to police the way we police back during the heyday of spring break and BCR, 'cause now we de-escalate. I'm telling you, back then, we wasn't de-escalating anything. And if we took those tactics from back then and used them now, I'm promising you, we will make a bad situation worse. And that's not what you guys pay me to, to oversee. We don't want that. That is another reason why events like this has to go. It's too taxing on their mental state, their physical state. It's way too taxing on them. And it is just not conducive to sustaining a healthy and well-staffed police department. I'm down twenty-three positions right now. I'm down twenty-three positions. And just some of the things that I'm hearing, it's, you can go to any other agency in this county, and you don't have to deal with what they deal with this weekend. The other agencies, they'll send us a couple of resources, and those are volunteers. Those are people that agree to come and assist. My cops got no choice, 'cause they work here in Daytona. So I don't want anybody to feel like, well, you know, this is Daytona, this is what they do, you know, spring break, BCR. We're not that agency anymore. We've changed, we've evolved. We'll do what we have to do, because we took an oath to protect this city. But events like this is just not fair to the staff, and it's definitely not fair to the residents of this city that had to tolerate what they had to tolerate. I genuinely felt bad, because I knew my folks were doing everything they could do. They were doing everything in their power. But, you know, how, how much can you do with three hundred cops when you're dealing with fifty thousand people? So literally, I had my staff spread out from University on the north end, all the way to Silver Beach. Um, I paid, we paid approximately a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in mandated overtime, just to facilitate this event. Um, I want to go and, and now highlight some of the incidents that we had to deal with. So the Speedway, the promoter rented out space inside of the International Speedway. We were told months ago, that was sold out. He sold out all his spots inside of the Speedway. We dealt with the same event last year. The difference last year with COVID was, they couldn't go across the street to One Daytona. They wouldn't allow them over there because of COVID. This year, I was hoping that One Daytona would take some of the pressure off of the beachside, because that's a huge parking lot behind One Daytona, and they can all go over there. And it was authorized, they allowed them to sit back there and have a, a parking lot party. So Friday night, we end up getting a bomb threat at One Daytona. So now, we had to clear out everybody from One Daytona and push them out onto International Speedway while we try to clear up this bomb threat. So now everybody's moving over to the Best Buy parking lot, they're moving over to the Volusia Mall parking lot. And the majority of them, once they saw us move in, once they saw the lights come on, most of them would just crank up and they would leave. But then a couple of them would ask, and they, they were genuine, and they say, hey, listen, we just want a spot that we can hang out. Can we just have a spot that we can just hang out, sit, you know, play a little music, and basically, we'll be on our best behavior? So you know what? I thought about it for a minute, 'cause I'm not that old. I remember my, my spring break time. That's what I did. I'm, I'm a Cookman grad. I was over here for BCR, I remember spring breaks. I said, you know what? Let me see if we can work something out. So because the head of security for the speed, for the Volusia Mall is a former city employee, I contacted him and I said, hey, listen, I'm trying to work something out here. I said, we're pushing everybody out of One Daytona because of a bomb threat. And I said, I'm afraid if we ship everybody over to Atlantic Avenue, they're gonna end up in the neighborhoods. And I'd rather have them stay out on the west end, in the parking lot. We monitor them versus everybody flooding over to Atlantic Avenue, ending up in the neighborhoods. And then, it won't be just a couple people complaining, it'll be the entire beachside in an uproar, because they've overtaken the neighborhoods. So on my word, they allowed me to... So on my word, they allowed me to use Volusia Mall as an overflow lot. So we literally packed the Volusia Mall parking lot from Applebee's to JCPenney's with trucks, and we monitored it. This was about 12:30. All was, all, no, this was about 9:30. We had them exit at about 12:30. So about 9:30, the lot started to fill up. I ended up leaving to come back to the beachside to check on things on the beachside, and I could hear my lieutenant on the west side dumping the parking lot. And I said, how's it going? She said, so far, so smooth. And then about 30 minutes later, she sends me a photograph of the Volusia Mall parking lot after it dumped out. They completely trashed that parking lot. There was trash everywhere. That was a lesson that I learned of no good deed goes unpunished. Tried to work with them, tried to give them a spot just to post up for a little bit, walk around, enjoy the other trucks, and that's how they repaid me. They completely trashed that parking lot. Luckily, the night security guard that was working had access to a street sweeper. So he was able to bring the street sweeper and completely clean up behind these trucks. Because if it were not for that, I was on my way to get large trash bags, and I already had a volunteer crew of officers, and we were physically going to clean that parking lot, because there was no way I was going to stick my neck out to allow them a place to hang out, and then turn around and turn that parking lot back over to Volusia Mall in that condition. So for me, that was a lesson of no good deed goes unpunished. So let's fast forward to bar closing. We know our bars close at 3:00 AM. So we set up like we normally do. We set up a traffic pattern, and we start flushing out Seabreeze. And we get to a point to where I look over at, I'm standing in front of Razzles, and I look over towards Atlantic Avenue, it's after 3:00 in the morning. It's still bumper to bumper. Like, these kids, there was no chill. These kids, they treated, they treated A1A like it was the Las Vegas Strip. They treated us like this was the city that never sleeps, and they had no plans on going back to the hotel. So now, I'm looking, and it's after 3:00, and I know I got to bring these folks back in at noon. So I said, okay, I promised folks I wouldn't close the bridges. I said, I made that promise. But I say, you know what? I'm going to keep the Main Street Bridge open for the residents, business owners and vendors, and I'm shutting every other bridge down, and we're going to set up a traffic pattern, and we're going to push everybody over the bridge, and we're going to lock them down, and we're going to put them all in timeout, and we're going to tire them out. And then when we let them back over the bridge, they'll be ready to go to bed, they'll be ready to go to the hotel. So essentially, we had to do that both nights. Both nights, after 3:00 AM, I'm out there, we're setting up a traffic pattern. So we forced everybody westbound over the Seabreeze Bridge, and then those that were already south of Seabreeze, we forced them off westbound on International Speedway. And I literally had cops standing on the westbound span of the bridge before we opened it up, going truck to truck. Where is your hotel? Okay, go there. Where is your hotel? Okay, go there. This is what we did once we let folks back over. We literally had to put that whole event on timeout, so that they got the point that you're not going to cruise until the sun comes up, because we're ready to go home, because we got to do this all over again tomorrow. So literally, we did that both Friday night and Saturday night. We literally had to force them back to the hotel. I mentioned the pink peas. I think that was the one bright spot. I didn't get one email about folks not being able to get to where they needed to go, not one text message about folks that couldn't get to where they needed to go as a result of that pink pea system. So I believe that was, that was one bright spot, considering everything we had to deal with was the pink pea system. Now, let's fast forward, let's go to Saturday. Saturday, we have briefing, and I know what the cops just got through dealing with on Friday night, so I said, all right, let me dig deep, and let me come up with a good motivational speech to get these guys motivated to go back out. So I say, listen, we live a results-oriented life. So when there's 300 of us, and we're dealing with 40,000 to 50,000, if nobody gets shot, stabbed, or run over, that's a success. That's what I told them. All that went out the window at about 4:00. So at about 4:00, we get the call, shots fired, 3,000 block of North Atlantic Avenue, and it's all on video, it's all over social media. I got a guy from Georgia and a guy from Tennessee who get into a road rage incident. One cut the other one off. They're sitting in traffic. So they get out, get into a fight. My suspect has a gun in his right hand. Victim punches him, he raises the firearm, shoots him right in the arm, right there in broad daylight in the middle of Atlantic Avenue. This is what we're dealing with. The one benefit of traffic being so heavy was, he jumped back in his truck, or jumped back in the car and tried to get away, he could only make it a couple blocks, because traffic was just that heavy. He made it up to Halifax, and he started coming northbound on Halifax, and it was actually assisted by one of our battalion chiefs, Larry Stony. He was there, and he kind of pulled this truck out. I don't want to get him in trouble with the fire chief. But he actually helped us out, he did a great job. So I want to thank also the fire department for their efforts this weekend, because they assisted us in grabbing the shooter. So he wasn't able to get far. So then, we're dealing with that. I got a crime scene in the 3,000 block of North Atlantic. Now, we're diverting traffic around the crime scene. So now, I'm going back to my traffic supervisor, and I'm like, hey, look, I'm at a point now to where I'm ready to shut all the bridges down again. And they said, chief, don't do it. If you do it, you're going to make a bad situation worse. Don't shut the bridges down. I said, all right, I'm going to listen to you. I put you in this position of trust. So let's just work the crime scene as fast as we can, and we'll keep it moving. And then, a few minutes later, I got one of my guys go down. I don't remember the exact address, but I had an officer go down on his motor, he got struck by a truck. But this truck wasn't related to the event. This was a beachside resident who ran a stop sign and hit one of the motor officers. So he suffered a broken arm. But I'm just thankful, it could have been a lot worse than what it was. But I'm just grateful and thankful that he will be making, making a recovery. Next, there was a, later on in the night, there was a four-car, four-car pileup on top of the Seabreeze Bridge. This was closer to bar closing. And then there was a vehicle fire on the Oak Ridge span of the bridge. So these are just a few incidents as I highlight and go through that just kind of give you a little bit of an idea of what we dealt with. That video that we showed, all of that stuff happened. That's not fiction, she didn't make that up. That stuff happened. And I don't know, and I say this with all due respect, I say this with all due respect, I don't know how we watch that video and have any other discussion, rather than how do we just get rid of this event? Because I can only speak for me. All of you all are in authority over me. I'm, I'm the police chief. All of you all are in authority over me, so ultimately, I'm sure there'll be discussion. After I'm done, the mayor has already stated that we're not going to, we're not going to make a decision tonight. I respect that. But I just want to go on record and put it out there that I've already spoken to the higher-ups at the Speedway, because half of them retired from Daytona Beach Police Department. So I've had very candid conversations with them while I was out there dealing with this. And I told them, if this event continues, you run the risk of ruining, ruining the relationship with this police department. Because I, I just can't accept what, what took place this weekend. It was just horrible. The promoter himself lives in Jacksonville, and you wonder why he comes to Daytona versus having this event in Jacksonville, because the last time I checked, there's a beach in Jacksonville. There's no reason he has to come here and do this event here. So if the system is broken, and we're saying that there's no way to pressure the Speedway to not rent to this promoter, then it's just that. The system's broken, and I feel like we have to come up with a way to fix this, because just speaking for myself, I'm not in agreement with altering this event, tailoring this event, adjusting this event, changing the dates that they come here. I just want it gone. I think the residents want it gone. It's just, it just doesn't work. It just doesn't work. The city manager has said it, since he landed here, he said, what do we want to be known for? Do we want to be known as a college and university town? Do we want to be known as a family destination? Do we want to be known as a special event town? All I can tell you is, we do not want to be known for events like this. We do not want to be known for events like this. I have a lot of pride in this city. I wouldn't have taken this job if, you know, I didn't see the potential in this city, and the potential that I have in this police department. But I'm just telling you guys, it's getting really, really hard to keep these guys motivated. It's getting very hard to keep them motivated, because they all have friends in law enforcement that work for other agencies that don't have to deal with what, what they deal with here in Daytona. And I'm trying to get them to take pride in it, but I don't know if that's going to continue to work. We're at a point now to where we, we need relief. We need relief from this, because this, this just doesn't work. It just doesn't work.
Let me ask you a question. And this has been a part of my sentiment. Is it the totality of experiences as it relates to even other events, you know, the invade events? Or is this something different than all of that? Is, are trucks different and more overwhelming in their own way?
I don't think the trucks are different, per se, but this event seems to be getting longer and longer. Like, I think we could deal with it for one day, but we was dealing with this for almost a week. Like, these trucks rolled in Tuesday, Wednesday. We were getting complaints Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then it all hit, you know, Friday, Saturday, and then the Sunday, thank God, we got the rain on Sunday, and it helped push them out a little bit early. But I don't think the trucks are necessarily different. It was, when you talk about the invade events, this is like a beach city issue, because I talked with the chief in Miami Beach, I talked with the assistant chief in Clearwater. They had to shut down the beach last weekend in Clearwater, and it's because of these invade-style events. Social media is such a powerful tool and instrument now, to where it's almost like these flash mob, everybody just show up and let's overwhelm type things, to where I'm already asking the question, we have to get something in legislation to where we can go after promoters that do this, because we can't, we can't continue to do this. I know it's easy, it's easy to say, you know, well, you know, we can't stop people from coming to the beach, and I agree with that. I agree with that. We don't want to necessarily stop folks from coming to the beach, but when they're coming to the beach with ill-will intentions, that's a problem. And you can see it in the social media posts. It may start with an innocent post, but then, as you continue to read, and as you continue, and continue to monitor, social media, it's like, all right, let's bring firecrackers, and let's throw firecrackers at the cops. Let's do this, let's do that. It builds, there's instigators in these groups, and they come over here with one purpose, to overwhelm, and because the theme is, they can't arrest us all, they can't catch us all. And this is a building thing. This is built, so it's, we're going to get to a point here, to where we're going to have to get something in legislation that allows us to take action. Because I'm already getting emails about a potential Trucktoberfest. I've already saw that. We dealt with a Trucktoberfest last year. We dealt with it. But it wasn't as big as the truck meat. It wasn't as big, but we had to bring a bunch of folks in, we canceled days off for that, and we literally chased trucks around the city. We, we got to figure out how to stop that. We, we got to figure it out, because this just, it, it doesn't work. It doesn't work.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions of a chief?
I do have a question. I want to ask you if you think, first of all, I want to tell you thank you for the great job that all the officers did, officers did. And I agree with you. I don't want our town known as what this, what's been going on. I grew up here, I've lived here 43 years. I was one of those participants during spring break. Now, I'm on the other side. I've had kids that's done all this. And I know about these trucks, because I had boys with these trucks as well. I did kind of notice the Speedway event compared to the beachside was a little bit different. Crowd, some of it, some of them were older ones, with sponsored trucks that were legal, with families. What I seen on the beachside was kids. Kids that disrespected our town, the police, everything. And so I started thinking, what can we do? Because I had people out there saying, do, why'd you guys give them permits? The county, the city. We can't, we didn't give them permits. And so I'm thinking, okay, as a city, what can we do? So I started talking to some of my friends in Tallahassee, talking to our state, our attorney, excuse me, city attorney. And we do have, which I'm sure you're aware of, some of the statutes that we already have, 316.610. And then, in conjunction with that, we have 316.55 and 316.251. The first one is public safety. If a vehicle, we could have impounded. The second two is in conjunction with that, with the bumpers and the lift kits. Most of the kids over there, all of that's illegal, and I know that, because I had boys. And most of those vehicles are in the parents' name as well, because of insurance. And the reason I know that, because I had a son, and they wouldn't be able to afford their insurance. And so, having kids, and if you impound their vehicle on a weekend, you can't get it back to Monday. That's the worst thing you can do, is take a kid's pride and joy, like I used to take their cellphone. Oh, my gosh. So, and then I started thinking, what did they do during spring break to help, you know, because the officers were overwhelmed, 400 offices with 310,000 kids? And I found out, they created a task force to show the officers they weren't alone. Every city, because it's just not Daytona that's having the problem, it's overrunning in the shores, Ormond, Holly Hill, Port Orange. So I, I can't talk to my commissioners or the mayors, and so I started talking to the city attorney manager, and hoping that's getting conveyed my message. So when I talked to the Port Orange mayor about a task force, he was all in for it.
When you, when, when you say task force, you mean a task force of law enforcement?
No. A task force where you, where not, where showing that you're not alone, that we all get together, not, well, someone from each city, maybe the chief from each city, the mayor from each city, the city manager, the lawyers, and we work together and step up our ordinance, ordinance as a community, and show these, the truckers, because it's the constitutional right. They can all come here. We can't stop that. So if we show them that we all are coming as a community, and we mean business, that we step up every ordinance. I talked to some of the state attorneys, and I know you as well did. I mean, we use every ordinance we have, including the jaywalking. We use our state statutes, and, and we start this task force. And I do have all the mayors that are willing to do this. The chamber is also on board. We get our business bureau, the Motel Hotel is on board with this. I did talk to our county council, Billy Willer, and our county manager is on board with this as well. And she believes that we could have these meetings at the Ocean Center as a public forum. But this is, is, but the city of Daytona is the one that's going to have to lead this, our ma, our mayor, our city manager, and the chief. I'm just bringing up some ideas, because I can't think of anything else that would help. And that would be up to you all.
So I'd like to respond to those. So you referenced, it seemed like an older crowd inside of the Speedway, and then there was a younger crowd on the beachside, and I would agree with that. The money was inside of the Speedway, a lot of the large truck clubs were inside. But in my opinion, the onus, the onus is still on the promoter, because that is who he is marketing to.
And I agree with you as well.
So the, the younger kids that are coming, they're coming because they're following him. This is what he is putting out there. So he can't just tuck into the Speedway and say, I'm really not responsible for what they're doing outside. And then you reference several different statutes. It may not seem like it, we used all of those statutes. We used those bumper height, public safety, the whole nine yards. We used them. We've been using them, but again, when I have like... We've been using them, but again, when I have like 300 and we're dealing with 40,000 to 50,000, it's like a, it's like a pinprick. And then when you talk about towing, just trying to get a tow truck on A1A to tow a truck? I mean, that, that's compounding the traffic delays just trying to get through, just trying to get through. So I'm not, it's not my intent to shoot down these ideas.
No, I understand. I'm just, I'm just hoping that as a whole city, a whole county, that we could come together and show unity that we're not going to put up with this event. If you come here, we are going to lay down the law. And I don't know if that's something you're willing and wanting to try.
No, again, no disrespect. I'm just, I'm at the point where, because I've had these conversations this weekend, and some of the ideas were, maybe we can do a concert up at Destination Daytona, maybe we can push them to the Cabbage Patch. Let's kind of, you know, disperse them, let's kind of spread them out. I just don't see it working because the draw is the beach and the fact that they can drive on the beach and our bar area. And this is Daytona. We're the staple of the county. So if you're coming in from out of town, you know Daytona. You're going to come here, and we're still going to bear the brunt of this event. Even if they try to spread it out and have other things in other areas, we're still going to bear the brunt of this event because we're Daytona. It's just like, it's just like Bike Week with Main Street. Main Street is iconic. So I don't care what they got going on in Destination Daytona. People are going to come here to Daytona Beach because of Main Street. So it's going to be the same thing with this event. They can plan stuff everywhere else if they want, we're still going to bear the brunt of it. That's just my opinion.
And what do you recommend to stop it?
That we don't have it. That we don't have it.
I understand that. How do you stop it? That whole point is how do you stop someone coming from public roads? I'm, I mean, I'm not arguing.
I do have, I do have an idea, and I haven't fully explored it yet, but a couple members of my command staff have already gotten in my ear, and that's something that I need to get with Mr. Jager about. And there's something called a cruising ordinance. And they have this in other areas to where it, it's illegal to continue to drive in circles in an area after so many times you get cited, and after so many times you get towed. Now, this is what's being relayed to me. Again, I haven't fully looked into that yet. That's going to be a conversation we have. Because if we put an ordinance like that in place, then it won't be as appealing to come here because they know we can't just cruise all night.
Correct. But you just said that you gave out citations and you had a hard time getting a tow company to tow the vehicle.
Right.
So that would be the same thing. You're going to be towing.
We'll figure it out. If I got to pull them off onto a side street or something, exactly, yeah.
It's exactly the same thing I was saying, and you said you were having a hard time. So I'm just asking.
I'm just throwing out ideas. But I tell you, bottom line for me is, number one, this is an event we should welcome. If they group up and get together and decide, you know, we're coming to Daytona, that's something we got to deal with. But I don't feel like we should be...
Yeah. Let's remember now, we're not going to solve it. I said this. We're not going to solve it tonight. No matter what our ideas are, it's not going in tonight. And, and, and we have to remember that this event is different from these invade events. And that's what I try to get the public to understand. You know, because I get people saying to me, "Well, maybe you, you just, the invade events, you treated them differently than you treated these people." It's, I'm not going to get into culture wars. We don't like either one. You know, we don't want to be a victim of someone saying they're invading our community. And we don't want trucks running over our grass and running, running through our neighborhoods. But there's a difference. One is an event that is unsanctioned by anybody. No one sanctions invasion events. No business, no one. So they're the ones that you legally have the hardest time curtailing. And this is what I said to the Speedway, I just have to be honest. We didn't sanction it. You sanctioned it. So at the end of the day, if it doesn't work and we as a community reject it, then you either have to be the good partners and good stewards that we require you to be and expect of you, or then we're going to continue to have this problem. But at the end of the day, we can't regulate whether they choose to have the event. And that is why I was asking, Bob, if we could at least, if it comes to that, we could at least create an ordinance that makes it mandatory that they pay for all of the expenditures that we as a city incur. Because, you know, you can't, we have to make it difficult on the promoter. Then the promoter would have to pay for, what'd you say, 174,000?
174,000.
That's a lot of money. We shouldn't have to pay that. You know, and that's, so that's a part of it. I understand, but I didn't want to just cut you off.
Yeah. Bob, it's their constitutional right to actually come here. We cannot stop someone from coming to our public roads. Am I correct?
I believe the question was whether we could impose the cost for enforcing our...
Well, no, I know we can do that. Well, yeah, mine's a different question because I've asked you this question before. Can we stop them from coming over on B-side?
Well, of course, people have the right to associate and travel. So we can't, we can't prohibit that, subject to the chief's ability to control traffic for public health and safety.
Okay, yes or no?
Yes or no? Do they have a right to travel? Yes, they have a right to travel.
Okay, thank you.
In general.
I think, Mr. Mayor, you've hit exactly on the point, is that this is about our relationship with the Speedway and the corporate entities that control the Speedway. You can't hear me, okay? I think this is about our relationship with the Speedway and the entities that involve, that are incorporated there. And I, I mean, they're, they're a private company, but we do a lot of work with them. And I think it's building on what Commissioner Cantu said, maybe rather than having a task force from a police perspective, a group of people that just go and sit down with the Speedway and say, "Hey, listen, I'm sure you didn't profit..." Yeah, I mean, that's what needs to happen. I can't imagine the Speedway is blind to the concerns, and if it's put on their doorstep, as it's been put on their doorstep tonight, then I think they'll understand this. And I, I think that that is probably the first place to apply political pressure and community pressure to say, "Hey, you know, we value you in our town. We're good. We've worked together with you a lot. Please don't approve this event in the future, or if you're going to do it, then, you know, internalize the cost that we've had to bear and make sure that it's a fair cost and you're not just making a few hundred thousand dollars and costing us three, four times that." I, I think that's the first conversation that needs to be had. And I think if the Speedway didn't allow them to come, I think there'd be probably a significant reduction in the crowd right then and there.
We're agreeing. That's essentially a large part of, we had a frank conversation with them today, but we have to remember that that's an event arena. So their, they have to have a concern is, when does it stop? You know, at what event? Because, you know, you have other events coming up, not, not just races. They're trying to use that facility. They spent $400 million to expand that into, you know, like rock concerts coming up. You got Rockville coming up. When does it stop the political, community pressure? Because the community doesn't want an event, are we each time going to show up and say, "We don't want an event, so we're pressuring you not to have it"?
Well, that's cancel culture.
I retort that, my retort to that is, it, all events are not the same. You know, they're not even. And, and we've established a standard. I think we already have a standard. And what we're saying is that this doesn't meet the standard. And most people are saying, the chief is saying so far, he doesn't think that it can. They, of course, are going to want to figure out a way that it could conceivably meet a standard. You can't deny them, and we have to engage in the process of seeing if that standard can be met by discussion, by conversation. And then if they decide to keep that standard, we do the best that we can to see if the standard is met. And then if it's not met, I will be the first one. I won't have a pitchfork, but I'm going to have my bullhorn, and I'm going to have this bully pulpit to say that this just doesn't work for us. I've already essentially said it doesn't work, but I understand that they are in business and they want to figure out a way to make this work because they got to figure out a way to make sure the next event works, if it's not trucks.
And, and the task force I'm talking to about is we bring someone from the Speedway that represents the Speedway as well. And it's just not Daytona that's having this problem with the trucks. It's overflowing into Port Orange, it's the shores. And they all want to come together and unite as one. And I don't see where there's a problem, we all can talk and unite and say, I mean, we're not going to stand for this.
Can I add something?
I have no problem with a task force, but I do believe that the most effective way to address it is a direct line to the folks who control it.
Yes.
But a task force, because we have to be one united community. And I too have, you know, I've spoken with, you know, a few mayors, and I will speak to others, but I, I understand that part of, you know, creating a task force. But I commend him because he made a beeline directly to them. They made a line to me, but I realize that I have to first feel what you feel before I can communicate with them. And then today, I was able to get engaged because I intend to be fully engaged with them to try to solve the situation. But I have to first, and I told them that. I said, "I represent the 70,000 people who live here before I represent anybody." And that's who I'm going to represent, and their values and their pain is what I have to reflect in my message to you. I can't allow you to soothe it over with, you know, the niceties of spreading it out and, you know, diversifying where they're located without feeling the pain of this community. Because if we bring it back and it doesn't work, I'm never showing up with any line of logic other than, hell, no, it doesn't work here. You know, and then if you continue to bring it, then we're at odds. And we don't want to be at odds with, you know, one of our community's greatest benefactors.
Well, I agree with you. I'd rather not have the truck event, but we can't stop it. I mean, we can talk to the promoters, but anybody that drives a truck that wants to go on B-side, they are more than welcome to go on B-side. It's their constitutional right.
We understand that. We understand.
And with social media, it is so hard to control. I mean, it's like wildfire.
We understand that, but we, we also think that there's a difference when you say that something is a part of your standard and you are sanctioning it in your community. You know, there's a difference. And we want to say that we don't sanction these things, you know, and so I think...
And we said that as well. I have all the, yes, we did.
I, I understand.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, to that tally of $174,000, I'd like us to also keep in mind that I contacted Waste Pro. 16% increase in trash on B-side, as well as, they're still tallying about $20,000 cost to the commercial. They're looking at the residential. They have not gotten the numbers yet in our residential communities. And then also the extra costs incurred by the residents as it relates to Public Works and how long it's going to take us to recover just from picking up the trash.
This was only three days compared to the week before.
Exactly.
Thirty-three percent increase in outs, 40 out. 16% increase in disposable. 16% increase in the cost of pickup. And this was only for three days.
And now Commissioner Trager and I and Commissioner Delgado, we feel strongly about this because that impacts all of our residents. And that's what we saw and lived in and woke up to every single day. And this already started with the first phone call on Tuesday. So that amount of trash, they're not paying for it. The rest of us are paying for that with the landfill, and that's unfair and it's wrong. So if we can add that to the list, I'm sure the number will go up. And it's not yet complete. It's not yet complete.
We're adding the director, Holmes, from Public Works. It's not here, but we did bring in additional 16 employees for the weekend from Public Works. And so there is a cost associated with that for overtime to bring in those employees. Just, and they were going to never be able to clean up our, empty our trash fast enough, but we did bring them in because it assisted with the barricades as well and not only the trash pickup. So we did bring in more people. As the chief stated, it was not only police and fire, but many of our staff members that are in other areas of the organization were out and about on this particular weekend, and they brought them in to help.
So this horrible, horrible, horrible event is going to cost us a pretty penny. This event has been in existence for five years now, and you would think by this time they could have gotten it right. Well, obviously, they have not. And also, we're going to need the cooperation of all the cities around here. Like she said, it's not going to work just Daytona Beach. It's got to be all the other cities.
I will...
And we need to start paying attention to what we put in our PDs in the future as well.
Yeah. I will say that the, my conversations with the Speedway will continue. I, as the mayor said, he was very frank with his expectations, and I do want to make sure that we do have a positive working relationship. And that's why they were keen to invite me out on Sunday to speak directly to the promoters. But I was, I was geared up because the chief had been out. And he, he said, "Could he just talk with me about the situation, what his, the women and men of our police department are dealing with?" But I can promise you as elected officials and as the community that I've seen the emails, I've seen the videos, I've talked to the, the actual person that put the video, as far as communicating back and forth, she may be good for a job with the city, doing some marketing to help us out. But we will talk with the Speedway. Not only did the Speedway receive all of your emails, and you're, I sent it to them. I sent the video to them from the hotel leadership. I will be sending those emails to them, and they are concerned. They don't want to mess up their brand in this community because they will tarnish the NASCAR and the Daytona Beach Speedway brand, and they don't want that. So the individuals that we talked to today are concerned, and we will continue to talk with them. And they've heard the police chief tonight. He is the chief law enforcement officer in this community, and I'm going to respect his expertise because that's what he's been trained to do. And I'm going to be the administrator to try to protect the interest of the elected officials who are elected by you all in this community. And so we, we will not just wait. We're going to follow up early. And the chief is already working on the next, he was telling me about the next special events that are coming. So this will be something that, when we make a decision and we bring it back to you all, we're going to take that back to the Speedway and say, "This is where we stand." Because I can't see the taxpayers of Daytona Beach paying 250-some thousand dollars for events that we may not have to have to. And if we get partners from these promoters that are not only doing stuff at the Speedway, that may be doing stuff at the Bandshell or at Municipal Stadium or other areas, we have to make sure that not only do we get, recoup our costs, but to protect the best interests of the residents that have been here for 30, 40, 50, 60, or their entire life. So we will do that. I make that promise to you all, and I know the chief has made that same promise before I even got here.
Mr. Feacher, didn't you tell me as well in our meeting that when you talked to the Speedway, they were going to continue having the truck event? They did not want to get rid of the truck event? Am I correct?
No, no, that, that is not the, what they said. They are, they want to hear from us. They need to determine if they, one of the two comments were, is we need to decide if they're going to keep doing it or not doing it. And I think the mayor was on that, that call as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's not a decided matter for them. You know, I think, you know, it's just not. It's far from that. And they're wide open to a true dialogue and discussion and figuring out if it can be successful. And if it cannot, I think it's a strong possibility that they would decide something different.
They said that.
Yeah. Well, essentially, that, you know, I, I don't, they would need to speak for themselves. But that's what the conversation was, and that was what they led us to believe. It's not a decided fact that we're going to bring this back. That was stated. You know, that, that was not verbatim, but that was my understanding, and rescue me if I'm wrong. Okay, but I don't want, they'll have to speak for themselves formally.
Well, I don't believe, I don't believe this event was profitable for anyone because the hotelers had their hotels trashed. Some of the businesses that generally are open for the residents, they could not open because of the gridlock. They weren't eating in our restaurants or anything. This was not, this was a total loss for the city and the residents, not even those who were in business. I mean, good grief. I live right off Atlantic Avenue, believe me. It was horrible.
And I think some of the people that we don't think about are the people who are other visitors who don't know that it's...
Exactly.
They don't know that it's truck week. So they come with their children because it's, school is out, it's summertime, and they're thinking they're going to be safe on the beach. And I talked to a couple of them who said they never even made it to the beach because of the trucks, because they were too scared to take their children out there and... And you can understand that. I mean, those tires are bigger than, bigger than all their kids. So, you know, one of the guys said, you know, that the tire was bigger than, bigger than my son. I wouldn't want to take my son out there and be amongst all of that with my children. What kind of parent would I be? So they wasted their money because all they could do was come and they couldn't really get into the places to eat. So a couple of them said that they struggled even just getting food. They couldn't get food delivered because delivery people couldn't get over to them. And so they were just stuck in their hotel rooms when they had planned a nice vacation to Daytona Beach. And they're already planning to come back. If you, if you have a child and they're on TikTok, they're already on TikTok talking about next year's truck meet being much bigger. So they're talking about it being bigger and they're, they've got all their little videos on, they've got all their little videos. They've got their videos out there. And in the videos, they're showing how disrespectful they were to our city and bragging about it. And I'm going to be honest with you. I want everybody to be able to come to the city, but I just felt so sorry for the residents on the beach side. People said their houses were shaking. I saw people throwing, just throwing bottles out of the windows of their trucks. And, and when they got tired of being in the traffic, they would turn those trucks around right on the grass of the people on the beach side, on their nice lawns, just driving right up on the grass, right on their lawns and tearing up their yards. And then once one person did it, you know, monkey see, monkey do, the second person did it and the third person did it. And so, you know, I'm more concerned with them. And I'm more concerned with the image that we want to portray as families are here. There definitely has to have, be more conversations about this. And not only do there have to be more conversations about it, it cannot be inaction. It has to be action. But it has to be action that benefits the people on the beach side the most to me. Because even just three days of that had to have been traumatic from what I saw. And I was over there all three nights. I went over there Friday, Saturday and Sunday and even trying to pick my own kid up from work. And I saw all of the things that I think in that video, I think that video was kind of mild.
I thought so too.
I honestly think that video was kind of mild compared to what I saw. And then I saw chief on Sunday and he and I had a brief conversation. And, you know, our men are out, they're outmanned out there. And you see them and, and there was nothing those police officers could do. By 12 o'clock Saturday, they weren't pulling trucks over as much as they possibly could. They were basically just trying to maintain, trying to keep the traffic flowing, trying to keep things going because they were outmanned. And we don't ever want to put our, our city in a position to where our law enforcement is outmanned because it makes everyone unsafe. They need to constantly have the ability to be in control of things. And when we put them in a position to not be in control of things, and when things go viral because something happened in the city of Daytona Beach because of events like this, you talk about a bad brand, that's a bad brand to me.
I agree 100%.
I'd just like to commend chief and your staff because that had to be difficult. I know there were probably names called and, you know, situations that could have really gotten out of hand. There could have been lives lost. You know, our officers could have found themselves in situations that we don't want them in. And I just can't even imagine the time that you've shared with us that they spent. I mean, being tired, being hot in the heavy uniforms. I mean, it would just have been easy to shoot somebody and be over with, you know? But, but you stood. You stood on behalf of this city, and I commend you for that. I commend you for the report that you've given us this evening. And I think every expense that we've incurred needs to be reported to the Speedway to indicate that it's possibly yours if we continue at this, at this level. Because it's absolutely ridiculous. And as a homegirl, born and raised just like you, Mr. Mayor, it did not reflect the Daytona Beach that I know and love. And that's what the world is seeing. The world is seeing what we look like. The world saw that. Social media is, is open to the world. It's not just limited to us. It's not limited to our state. It's showing everybody what we are allowing in our city. And we need to do something.
So I just wanted to go over a couple of calls for service. So from Thursday to, through Sunday, we answered 2,830 calls for service. Friday night was 870, Saturday night was 991, and Sunday was 539. On a normal weekend when there's no events going on, we service a little over about 400 calls. So to go from our normal calls for service of around 400 to 870 and 991, that's what we were up against. And that's citywide. And then our, our final stats were, we did 1,111 traffic stops. We issued 940 citations, 27 criminal sites, 35 misdemeanor arrests, 10 felony arrests, seven DUI arrests, 25 tow vehicles and 13 crash reports.
Busy.
Ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Okay. Now, I know we've talked about this and we'll hear from residents, but we must continue with commission comments and then we'll come to residential comments. Who was first tonight? I don't remember. Commissioner May?
No, I'm sorry.
I think that we have said, all we have to say, everybody has spoken clearly. I have all the emails that people sent me, and I think nothing more really needs to be said about it. We'll just act moving forward, and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Cannon too?
And I've already said what I would like to try, and I'm done.
Okay. All right. And I'll just acknowledge that I'm on board with some form of task force and I'll talk with Mayor Burnett and others, and I'm definitely, will be engaged. Yes.
I only have one comment tonight, Mr. Mayor, and that is in regards to the water tower in Suburbia Park. And I know that previous CM and I had talked about, and he said that they were looking for alternative sites for that, for the, for the water tower. And I want to make sure and I want to know if that's something that's still being considered. Because I know he said that the pipes and everything were already there, but I just don't see putting that there with, in a park for children. I don't see having chemicals out in a park for children. I just, I expressed that to him before, and some of the neighbors have expressed it before. And I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, if possibly even relocate that water tower. I don't think any of us would want our children to play in a, in a park that, you know, potentially chemicals are being brought to and being dispersed. So I do want to say that. And just want to thank city manager for coming out to the Zone 5 meeting and introducing himself two weeks ago, or Monday, last Monday. We appreciated you coming out and glad to see that the Norma Bland football field and soccer field was dedicated on Saturday, which was a very nice event. Couple commissioners, Commissioner Reed was out, mayor was out, and Mr. Feacher was out and chief was out. So I wanted to thank everyone to come out, for coming out and supporting that. It meant the world to her family. The field is beautiful. They've already put the sign up and it's permanent spot, and they've already put shrubbery all around it. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that supported me on that, all of my commissioners that passed seven, seven to zero, I think. And I just want to thank you all for supporting me on that because it meant the world to the community, to Zone 5 and to her family. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That was a beautiful event. I'm glad that I was able to be there. I read the, the report from the public information officer. It said that gave a rousing prayer. I said, okay. But it was a beautiful event and there was a lovely turnout from the audience. We had a great time on Saturday evening with the concert series at Daisy Stockton Park. It was a little bit more quieter over here, you all, than it was on your side of town. MCDC welcomed the city manager. There were over 100 citizens that came out to say hello and to meet Mr. Feacher, about 200, came out to greet Mr. Feacher, and it was a really nice turnout at the Dickerson Center. And that concludes my comments.
What can I say? There was absolutely nothing positive about this event. We need to cooperate with our neighboring cities because this has to be a group effort. I do not want to have them back again, myself personally. Because in five years, if they cannot prove themselves to be an event that we want, we can be proud of, we don't need to have them. The beach side is a barrier island. It has the capacity to have only a certain amount of people there, and we definitely went over that two or three times. I concur with him having to close down the bridges sometimes. And if we can't stop them from coming here, if we have to close down the bridges and go with the pink pass or whatever it is, we'll have to do it. But we need to have the cooperation of our neighboring cities so they don't come in through up there and then filter down. Like I said, there was absolutely positively, nothing positive about this. Nobody, I don't think, gained anything. We all lost a lot, not only our reputation, but money-wise also. And the sleep and the difficult time that all the residents went through, and I apologize for that. And I hope never to have to go through this again.
Yes, sir.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for you? So we can get to residents, I will be brief of two things. One, Norma Bland celebration was, the seraphic was phenomenal. The singer, the young lady who sang brought tears to my eyes and it was amazing. And it was just what Zone 5 and the city needed, coming out of a lot that we've dealt within the last year and the way that Norma left us as a victim of COVID. And the life that she lived was well reflected. The chief and the former chief and the commissioner all did an amazing job, as well as Ms. Slater, paying homage to her. The prayer warrior was on fire. And it was, it was, it can't be overstated because communities need those type of experiences. So, thanks. And then the introduction to our manager was, was another great event. The Juneteenth event today was awesome. I had to go over and congratulate Mr. Willis, who received a major award for supporting Juneteenth. I normally do not give him much kudos because he's a sand crab. And we, we had many great battles during our tenure in sports. But I'm joined the Juneteenth committee in acknowledging how truly proud of him that we are because he is a homegrown product of this city and doing a magnificent job in his work. And then finally, I have asked our city attorney to look at establishing a ordinance or something that would allow us to establish a non-discriminatory, non-discriminatory policy for sources of income as it relates to affordable housing. And I will allow him to illustrate exactly what that means. I've noticed in other municipalities and again, through my study and work with other mayors, it's something that has, is being done in other municipalities. And I've looked at how they are doing it. And we want to make certain that our residents who, if they can, if they can pay, that they are able to rent regardless of how they ascertain the funds. And that doesn't mean that they're getting drug funds. It means legal funds, and we'll let him illustrate what that means.
The mayor had asked me to look into this issue. It's, it's an anomaly really in the Federal Housing Act. The Federal Housing Act prohibits discrimination on numerous grounds such as race, gender, sexual orientation, family status, et cetera. But one thing that the federal housing authority doesn't address is source of income discrimination. And so what many jurisdictions have found, that people that obtain Section 8 housing vouchers are not accepted by their landlords for various reasons, either proper or improper. One argument raised is that there's paperwork involved. This would eliminate that type of discrimination. Other jurisdictions have adopted it down in Miami, or a couple of examples down there. At any rate, we're following some of those examples and drafting up an ordinance in order to prohibit that type of source of income discrimination so that anyone coming forward with, with either Section 8 housing assistance or any other sort of assistance or source of income such as Veterans Administration vouchers could not be discriminated against in the decision to rent. So with your direction, I would be glad to continue to pursue that and submit something to the commission.
Is that, and that was the purpose of my bringing that up because it's a request and we have to be okay with that? Are you all, you have questions or?
I have a question about that. So are we saying that private landlords, private landlords would, would have to accept affordable housing vouchers or vouchers or choice, whatever we're using? They would have to use that? How would they prove this or disprove it? How would the resident go about doing this?
It'd be proved as, as any other discrimination case would be. It would be a code violation for one thing, so, you know, the enforcement mechanism would be through our, our code system. So, but it would be proved in front of the magistrate or the code board or a county court if it's enforced in that way, just as any other case would be. There'd have to be proof of the, the improper intent through statements of the landlord, for instance.
Is this something that you all are okay with, considering?
I guess my question is, can we be sued at all? And you're saying so far, no one's been sued, meaning from the landlord's side of it. Do they have the right to decide what they want to do, when they want to do, as it relates to this new ordinance?
So generally, when you apply for, to be a tenant, they do background checks to determine, you know, if, if you've got a source of income, whether it be employment or, you know, whatever. And again, the, the problem raised by tenants is that if they have this source of income that isn't from their employment, that is not counting toward their application to be considered as a tenant, and therefore they're, they're not getting that residency. So the intent of the ordinance would be simply to, to, for, to require landlords to consider all forms of income which come to that tenant. Now, I should say, there is some paperwork involved to the landlord, and you'll, you may hear this in response to the ordinance, because they do have to contract directly with the housing authority. The voucher comes from the housing authority to the landlord. That's contractual, Matt.
So this just got more interesting for me. So when you go through housing authority, and Derek, please help me with this if you need to, they check and verify the, the accommodations, right? They make sure the accommodations are suitable, inhabitable, and that it's good for one family or X number of people per household. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So are we in agreement that he's okay to bring back something? Anybody opposed to that? All right, that concludes my remarks. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Just two items. The Fourth of July, I don't think we'll meet again. Before that, the parade that's going to take place at the, starting from at the end of, I think it's, it's at Ocean Avenue, where, and it goes down. So that's on July the 4th. It's in the report. And also just thank, I see Betty and Drew were also at the, the Norma Bland event as staff members, so I wanted them, but, but that's about all.
And I'd like to add that Fourth of July parade that's being led by the Marine Corps of Daytona, there is a ceremony that starts at nine o'clock honoring one of our veterans as well.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing further.
Okay. And I would remind you all that at the next meeting, I will not be here. Okay, and I would remind you all that at the next meeting, I will not be here. I will be participating in the blessing ceremony of our beloved statue honoree, Dr. Pethen, where I will offer a key to the city and reflections on her as it relates to participating in that process. Mayor's journey home, I'm sure, to turn around the world. I hope that you will be able to participate in it. Hosted here in the city. We, we have not formulated a complete agreement, but we hope that it will be co-hosted between the Statuary Fund Committee, Bethune-Cookman, and the City of Daytona Beach. And you will bring her home. In the county?
Yes.
Okay, in the county, all right. In the county, so all of us hosting her statue that will ultimately be in Washington, D.C. And that is, that is a goal in the plan. But Commissioner Delgado will plan to be in this scene in case technology doesn't work for any reason for our next meeting. But if I'm capable, I will operate from Detruson to A-1A. That's it. We will, uh, residents at this time.
Our first speaker is Billy Wheeler. And on deck is John Nicholson.
Oh, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Dr., Mr. Fiecher. So glad to meet you. And ironically, we had a meeting set up for Monday, and it was quite, just to get to know him. And it was quite interesting that we got to know each other and, over a really trying time. I'm Billy Wheeler, Volusia County Council Vice Chair and District 2 Representative. And my district is the majority of the beach side. So it's from Ponsonlet to Ormond. And then I go all the way over to Tamoka Farms Road, go through South Daytona, Port Orange, and a big part of Daytona. So I have Daytona Beach shores. And I can tell you, when this discussion and we start to communicate on this, I would really encourage Daytona to lead the pack, but that we're all want to be at the table. Because the shores was definitely involved in it. So I'm speaking on behalf of 110,000 people. And I heard from a lot of them because they were all involved, whether on Dunlauton. But I happen to live on A1A, and I live in the shores. So I'm speaking as a resident that lived it, and it was unbearable. And the emails, the videos that I was receiving, where people were holding their phone up to their windows on the 10th floor, and I was hearing reverberation from boom boxes and whatever speakers in there. And more than all of that, what happened to our beaches? So we haven't even come up with our costs. The beaches you saw, I could hardly speak when I was watching that video again. I copied the video, and I actually sent it to my staff. And I said, "You hear about it, but I want you to see it." Because this is what I'm living, and this is what the residents are living. My district is living, and it's, it's deplorable. How we stop it, I don't know. I mean, we can say no, but people still have the right to come here. So Jakari, amazing. I, I don't, 300, you were so outnumbered. There was just, I mean, you did everything you could. And the shores issued 600 citations, over 600. And they sent a, fired truck right in the middle of A1A, and they just wrote citations. It was unbearable for every citizen. We couldn't leave our homes, couldn't get onto A1, A1A. And when you did get on there, the sights that you saw. It was so much disrespect. Lord only knows what our costs are going to be on the trash pickup on the beach. So we have a cost involved too. So I'm just saying that I've talked with the manager, and we are at the table for any conversations. This is a community event problem, Mayor. And I would encourage you to include all of us in that conversation. We want to do this with you. We want to make that strong, that voice, and say, "Hey, not in our cities, not in Volusia County anymore." You know, "You're not going to treat us like that." Let's create our message. I'm going to be talking about, with Volusia County, on some of the advertising that goes out. You know, this is not the fun spot for everybody that, you know, they want to get that perception. So that was my time. Thank you.
Before we have our next speaker.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't acknowledge Mayor Burnett from Port Orange, our shores mayor, Ms. Miller, our county council. And I just want to say thank you. And I also would like to say thank you to all the other mayors that were on board with this. And Nancy Kiefer, head of the chamber, as well as Bob Davis, Motel Hotel, about doing this task force and coming together and trying to do something as a community and unite. So I just really want to say thank you. And the county manager.
Next speaker.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Lynn Smith.
As John comes, I want to remind everyone that our beaches, our hotels were already full. They were full weeks, several weeks in advance. So we didn't need trucks to fill up hotels either. Go ahead.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grammy Avenue. You all forget, this is the fourth event of this type that Beachside has gone through. You all forget, we went through this with Bike, Bike Week. They had to have a task force, and the bars on Main Street set down rules. And it changed Bike Week. Some of you forget Spring Break, MTV. Bud Asher promoted Spring Break from Fort Lauderdale. It was horrendous. He finally stopped it by not renting to the MTV. BCR was horrendous. A million dollars it cost us for BCR. We had police officers from what, 27 districts for BCR? Scarlet Golden finally did the respect. All the trashcans had the word "respect" on it. The exact same thing we're going through now, we went through before. All right? We've gone through it before. Now, the choice is, do we want to change it like we changed Bike Week? Or do we want to get rid of it like we got rid of Spring Break and BCR? That's your choice, all right? Those of us on, on Beachside, for the first time, had a police chief sit. My neighbor wanted him to sit on the front porch so he would see what was going on. He would see it, and he saw it. He noticed that we, on the Beachside, have problems with the large events. We do. You don't understand it when you live on the mainland. That gridlock is ridiculous. We go through that every Memorial Day. We go through that for high school graduations. We've been promised a study for almost 20 years on parking and the gridlock on the Beachside. 20 years, we're still waiting. That gridlock happens, okay? You may not have noticed it. But Jakari noticed it. So ask him, is there gridlock? That's what we go through like six and seven times a year. Memorial Day, it stops dead. Graduations, for three days, it stops dead. Those poor kids are not getting to their graduation because they're sitting in traffic. So, this is Fiecher, I forgot to tell you. Welcome. Jim Chisholm had four hurricanes, you had the trucks.
That's true.
Not like Jim Chisholm did on his inaugural visit. So I'm asking you, I know Jakari wants to get rid of it. There are other people that want to get rid of it. To me, it might turn out to be a Bike Week. I don't know. So if Stacy wants to have a group, have the group, but realize, I don't think you're going to change it. I think it is what it is. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lynn Smith, and on deck is Larry Chancery.
Hi, Lynn Smith, from 107 Seventh Street on Holly Hill. I'm going to be wildly unpopular with what I'm going to say. First, though, I do want to commend the chief and his officers for what they had to go through. First thing I would say is, if you wanted to live in a quiet, sleepy beach town, you're in the wrong place. And Destination, Daytona is a destination town. It is an event town, and it's a family town. It's all of those things. And if we wanted to make it more family-friendly, then I think there's a lot of things you ought to consider to make it look more like that. You know, like for one, the approach to the city, the gateway, is barren and an embarrassment. And secondly, there's no boardwalk for anyone to go to. If you haven't noticed my New Jersey accent by now, you could look up what a New Jersey boardwalk looks like and what families on the, go, going to the boardwalk looks like. I find it interesting that we, you can spend $800,000 on a statue and $600,000 on plants, but we can't pay the cops enough money to work for what they have to go through. And I think that being 23 cops short, you know, if you pay them more, you know, maybe there'd be more incentive, perhaps. Hire an event, you know, you want to create a task force? Well, maybe they need an event force of police officers just for those events. If you look up Seaside Heights, did create a cruising ordinance? It was very hard for them to enforce it. But you can check that out. New York City cleans up Times Square in two hours. I don't think that the businesses would say that they didn't benefit from this. I think a lot of people made money as far as hotels, restaurants, stuff like that. And a lot of decisions are made here that detract from the businesses making money. So I think that's something that needs to be thought about, too. I do represent, there's plenty of people on social media and at the events, and I was down there looking at the trucks, sitting in my Jeep. But there was a lot of people who answered back that, no, they don't want it gone. And no, it's not a big deal. You know, if you have to deal with loud noise for three days, there's benefits to what it does. And I know, again, I'm wildly unpopular with these thoughts, but I do believe. And I think that if the, one thing, too, is get some of these developers that, you know, everyone's building houses and everything. Find some developers who want to build that boardwalk-type concept. And then more families can come to enjoy that. There's nothing for them to go to there. So, thank you.
What part of Holly Hill you said you lived in?
Riverside Drive.
Eight hundred thousand, we didn't spend on the statue. That's private money, just, you know, you know, so know that we didn't. And I could tell that you, you didn't, didn't live here because you had a lot of erroneous facts. And that's part of, I normally don't correct folks, but thanks for your insight as to Daytona Beach.
Before we go to the next speaker, Mr. Mayor, the most interesting, interesting thing I thought that was said was, "If you want to be in a sleepy town..." It was on. "If you want to be in a sleepy town," saying that Daytona wasn't. But yet Holly Hill came to Daytona because they didn't want to be in a sleepy town. Holly Hill's a sleepy town.
Our next speaker is Larry Chancery, and on deck is Tim Sidola. Is there a Larry Chancery here?
Yeah, some, some.
Tim Sidola. And then on deck is Sharice Boyd.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Tim Sidola. I live on 800 South Peninsula Drive, which was a nightmare on Friday and Saturday night. I mean, it's not just noise. We couldn't go outside because of fumes, so, I mean, it was just terrible. I don't want to beat the dead horse. I commend our police chief and to this lady here. You know, I pay my taxes, and, you know, people say, "Well, you, you know, you moved to Daytona, you know, you should have known better." Well, you know, we shouldn't have to be put up with the disrespect for those. It's an event town, I get it. Let's have events that attract families, we can keep on with that. And so I don't want to beat the dead horse. I just want to thank you all for your input. And I don't think this, this event is, is anything that we should have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharice Boyd, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Sharice Boyd, my address is protected, so I won't say it. But I will give you my P.O. Box 9181 Daytona Beach, 32114. And really quickly, I just want to commend Chief Young. Thank you. And I know people follow me. So I was saying, well, we can't get rid of every event that comes here. The more I listen to him, the more I'm like, it's got to go. I do, I agree, chief, because of the things that it's done. However, to say it's not sanctioned, it may not be sanctioned by you all, but you all did give the Speedway their PD, as you call it. So they do have that opportunity to do these things. And possibly, as I said, maybe you need to look closer into the agreements that you have with these people. And I don't think you all are going to cause a bad stewardship or partnership between them because of the amount of money they put in. Like you said, they're a great benefactor. And in addition to that, asking people their public opinion and then like making fun of them just now, that's not very professional, even though people did laugh. And that's it, all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson. On deck is Keith Harris.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South East Street. I also am here tonight to address the trucks that came to the City of Daytona Beach. I first like to thank our police chief and commend him for outstanding job. There was too many problems for him to try to solve. I went over on the beach side Saturday night. I got caught up in that gridlock. It was terrible. We sat there for hours, and I was trying to get me something to eat at the crab shack over there. But I got there, they were closed. Then I went to another place, and they were closed because we spent all the time getting caught up and stuck in that traffic. Something needs to be done. It's good that they are coming here. The Speedway is bringing a promoter in here. But the rest of these people are coming in because of social media. And they are here, and they are growing in our city. And I watched that video tonight, it was just awful. I didn't even imagine all of that stuff going on. So it would be, would be for all of you here tonight that are sitting here representing your areas to get with these people at the Speedway. And let them know that we need something to be done about this. This is our city, and you represent. So you need to get and represent and make sure that we don't have to go through this again. Something can be done. You need to come up with a plan. So I advise you tonight to make that happen. Look out for the city. The police did his job, the chief. His job was to protect and serve, but this was too much for him. It was too much for me to be starving and couldn't get a meal in the restaurant to get tied up in that gridlock. So I say to the city manager, Derek Fiecher, I want to thank you for going to the Speedway and addressing this concern. You did the right thing because we need to let them know we want our promoters in here. But we don't want this kind of behavior. So please look out for all our residents, and thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Keith Harris, and on deck is Frederick Brown. Is there a Keith Harris? Okay, our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Malcolm Williams.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Proud resident of the city. I love Daytona Beach. I got two things to say about the recent event, which did go from about Wednesday through Sunday. I didn't get much sleep. My dogs didn't get any sleep. You didn't hear the video, the audio portion of that, which was the worst. I experienced witnessing several fistfights and other goings-on. That video was actually relatively mild compared to what I saw. But first thing I want to say, God bless you, Chief Young. God bless your department, everything you've done. And thank you, the City of Daytona did not jump on board this defund police thing. I believe in our police department, as you pointed out, they've transitioned. I also realize that Daytona is an event town. There's no two ways about it. When we kick out all the events, we kick out all the money. That money is used, obviously, to all the good projects that we do here in Daytona. So I don't want to see events eliminated. But yes, they need to be controlled. So the other thing I want to say about this recent event is, make no mistake, there was money made. There was a lot of money made by the trucks, companies, the promoters. That's why they came here. But they have to pay the expenses. No two ways about that. Now, the other things that I wanted to talk about once again... Now, the other things that I wanted to talk about, once again, I'm going to bring up public lands. You all work for us, and welcome to our new manager. And I haven't had a chance to talk to this, Mr. Fiecher, but I hope to sometime real soon. The city, public properties are not to be given away, especially without notification, especially with false applications submitted by attorneys, especially when it was done under the cover of COVID, where the public was not involved. And what I'm talking about is to give away the public lands, the access, which is a violation of the city extension plan where the lands, public lands were given away. And that was done last May 20. And I will continue to campaign campaign for this. And for you and the commission that don't get the message, the volume will be real loud during the election periods. I thank you also, Commissioner Henry, for recognizing what needs to be done with the suburbia park. Thank you for listening. I appreciate that. Even though I don't live there, I appreciate what the citizens need. The last thing I want to bring up, public safety. Mayor Henry, I talked to you about this after the fatalities on Atlantic Avenue. There is an answer. I've requested that we put together a task force, and I want to be on that if we can because there are answers. I've studied it very carefully. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Malcolm Williams, and on deck is William Bidoroff.
Malcolm Williams, 1006 Libby Avenue, and I'm a proud resident of Norma Land Zone Five. And I just want to just let you know that we do appreciate you coming out to our meeting. I hope some good things can come from that meeting. I want to talk about the truck week for a quick second. If you look on their website, first thing that they're saying is backed by popular demand. So what I don't see on their website is a code of ethics. And I understand what agreement we have with them. We need to put in that agreement that they also publicize the code of ethic and make it public because there is a difference between the Speedway, because we're not against the Speedway. There is a major difference between the Speedway and B side. We also know that. But if they advertise a code of ethics along with their registrations, along with their publications, along with everything they put out, that lets them know that we are they that they are a visitor in this city, and they should conduct themselves accordingly, I think that'll help change some of the perspective. We're not going to get rid of them. They're going to keep coming. But if we put set some guidelines for them and make it public and and stay on them about it, we can change the perspective of this event. Another thing I would say, not even with that, the truck week, with a lot of events that come here, the city needs to be put in a position that we can offset what's going on. We need to give these people a reason to park, to pay for parking like we do residents here, to go out and enjoy these things like we can. There was nothing to do on that side. So what are they going to do? They're going to ride the streets. But if we put ourselves in a position as a city to say, okay, if there's a major event or a major promotion on one side, let's do a smaller promotion on this side, and it opened up the opportunity for other promoters to actually help out with that, reducing some fees for the band shell or whatever we can do, to give them something to do, and the city will benefit from it as well, I think that's something to look at if you guys do that in your task force. Because that's half the problem. They're just riding through, doing whatever they want to do. Look at that video. Some of the stuff that was on that video was duplicated last year. And I don't, Mr. Turner, I don't know if you can comment on it. Last year, we went after the guy that was peeing in front of the Peabody. What are we going to do with the video we got this year to also let them know that this is not welcome? Some other things I wanted to talk about was, oh, shoot, I lost my mind. I got mad. Shoot, what have I talked about? Peabody, it wasn't that. I'll just leave it on that note. But again, I want to thank you guys for listening to us. Hopefully, something good will come out of this conversation from the residents and from the city side that everybody can get behind and agree upon.
Before you leave, you have 30 seconds, so I have a quick question. You want to use that time? You have that access? Go for it. So I attended a Peabody Advisory Board meeting, and you sit on the board. Thank you so much. My question was, you had a request on the board regarding the number of people who were attending the events.
Yes. One of the things I think has come up, and Deputy City Manager, if he's still here, can can back us up on that, is that we're waiting for the city to release some of the restrictions on COVID and how many people that we can get in the Peabody auditorium. Currently, we're losing business, and I've said this, and I say, if we keep going in the current rate that we're going, the Peabody is obsolete for us. It's really not doing us any justice. We're competing against other small theaters that got 1,000 seats. We're only allowing 250. We're not making any money. Our promoters are not making any money, and we're pushing everything back to 2022. And so if the restrictions, the one thing that has allowed us to sustain is that the Peabody opened up to the schools and the county to do their recitals, to do their rehearsals, to do dance recitals, and things of that nature. But again, they were only restricted to 250 people in a 1,500-seater facility. So we are really waiting on those restrictions to be lifted so that we can go to full capacity, we can start promoting the best way we can. I remember my last point. This is it. We cannot let a outside promoter out promote us in our city. That's what I wanted to say. These outside promoters are doing it. Why are we not doing it? They're getting 50,000 people here. We can't get 100 people here to do our event. Thank you.
Don't get used to going over the time limit.
Why do we, why do we still have restrictions on our Peabody? Could someone answer that?
They'll be lifted.
Okay.
Okay. Our next speaker is William Bidoroff, and on deck is Donna O'Connor.
Well, this is really simple. I don't have much to add to my complaints because everybody said everything, you know, and I definitely back you, sir. I haven't met you yet personally. It's the first time, but you hit a point. What is Daytona about? And it's not about that. But the most important thing why I stayed here tonight is to tell you, appreciate you all, because look how, no one thinks when they complain and they give you a hard time, how late you have to sit here at night sometimes and then get up in the morning and deal with it all over again. The most important part is for our police department. Here's my fear. Years ago, a friend of mine, Tiffany Grimm, lost her dad in in duty. He was Daytona PD officer. He used to taught me how to lift weights when I was a kid. So when you, when I heard that they had to work 16 and 18-hour shifts, you know, that's that's crazy. If we can't get them to pay for the extra police protection, they shouldn't be allowed to have the event. It's unsafe for the officers. I don't care if we can make a billion dollars off it. What value can you put on a father that's working or a mother that's out there working or somebody's wife or girlfriend or boyfriend or husband die in the line of duty because some jerk that's out of the control in a truck that might run one of those officers over? That's the main thing I wanted to say. And the second thing that I wanted to add has nothing to do with that subject. It has to do with the subject because I was here multiple times when people would come up and kind of be nasty to you all sitting up here. I think that there should be prerequisites. If people are going to speak, it should be in civil, at least civilly to you, any of you, because you're a public servant, and you're putting yourself out there. Now, I understand there's an argument there, but just think about this, and I think we all need to think about this. Just respect each other a little bit more. Just, you know, I know you guys, you've put up with me for years, all of you, so I appreciate you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bidoroff.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donna O'Connor, and on deck is Jessica Foreman.
Donna O'Connor, 920 North Grandview, Daytona Beach. Thank you, chief. You're awesome. And I'd also like to say thank you to the 9/11 dispatch people. They're all so awesome. My husband, him, and I have been living and working, yeah, hi, have been living and working in Daytona for 11 years doing rentals. I've never called 911 before. I called 911, I apologize, four times this weekend. I'm not a Karen. I was called a Karen on social media for posting my videos saying, why do you live in Daytona if you don't like noise? Well, there's noise and there's noise. First of all, I'm no Karen. I like a good time, too. I sent all of you a video that I took. Did you hear it? It's awful. I'm not even going to play it in public. I didn't know there were songs with words like that, I'll be honest. And this was outside my house at 1:30 in the morning, ba-boom, ba-boom, with really nasty verbiage. We don't need this. You know, everyone says, well, we, you know, we need all these events, and what would Daytona be like without these events? That was like, I spent my life in higher education, most like, most recently at Rollins College, and we would all agree, this place would be great if there weren't any students. But let's face it, come on, you know, we know, we know that we have these events, but this is not a good event. And chief, I support you completely in saying, let's not do this one. Thank you very much.
What'd you do at Rollins?
I ran, I was the department head for International Education for, ooh, long time, 15 years.
Louis Valdez still there?
I don't think so, no. I loved him.
He graduated from there.
I know you did.
That's right.
Our next speaker is Jessica Foreman, and on deck is James Schultz.
Hello. My name is Jessica Foreman, and my business at 200 South MLK Boulevard. And I want to say that everybody here had valid points. You cannot stop people from coming to the beach. But also, I wanted to ask a question. How can we get some type of consult with Orlando? Because we Daytonians invade Orlando. So does FAMU, Tallahassee, when we go to the classic. The problem is, yes, what was done in the early days, it seems like it's coming back. And now, now with social media, it spreads like wildfire. My cousin belonged to Jeep Week. She comes. They talk amongst themselves. They make the plans. Nothing is sanctioned. But I do feel like we, as a community, or maybe you can have a meeting where you can explain to our residents about how to, how the process is for events. Because from Mr. Jagger, he's saying that the, you know, the Speedway is basically able to hold events. But to me is, what is going to happen after the event? You're going to be at the Speedway for whatever the event, even if it's two hours, three hours, what's going to happen afterwards? Because to me, everything is on the beach side, other than Daytona, other than Daytona One. All the clubs. There's nothing else anywhere, even Beat, even on Beach Street. Everything closed early. So my thing is, you know, when we go to FAMU for the classic, we have here, we have Kissimmee, we have this thing, we have that. It's spread out a little more. And I agree with Mr. Malcolm, what he said. Another thing is, during these events, I highly suggest, please, please look into also allowing people to have peddler's license. Because right now, we're having an influx of food trucks. We have an influx of people that's vending. A lot of people are now calling code enforcement and being, you know, tattletale and telling people, oh, this person is set up here, this person is set up there. Maybe another thing is to allow peddler's license, so different merchants can kind of spread out. Maybe, maybe more food trucks can be in certain areas with the permission of an owner, not just because they're popping up, setting up. Because you see, in Orlando, they have peddler's license where you have to have your LLC or you have to be incorporated, you have to have, you have to have the permission of the landlord to say you're going to set up at this property in this event. Because there is an influx. People are going to keep coming here. We cannot, you know, I don't, nobody likes bad behavior. Nobody likes bad behavior. I don't like seeing what just had transpired. But you know what? It's, I hate to say, with the social media, it's going to continue to happen. I just, I want to see, for instance, I feel offended because of the Orlando invade Daytona. A lot of people and business owner on the beach side were like, you know, these people are cockroaches. These people are invading our beach. They're literally making racist comment, but the what I just saw, these truckers or pretend truckers, because I'm a real trucker. I have a CDL. They're just playing around with toys. That couldn't kill people because they can flip over. They're lifted, they're everything like.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is James Schultz.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. I moved to Daytona a long time ago. I didn't get to do spring break when I was in college. Well, not all the features of spring break are great, but I moved here in '72, hired on with Bill South, and pretty much been here since then. Not in Daytona so much lately, more in Norman, but when I go out the door, I see Daytona. This event was a bit harsh, and I would like to thank Chief Young and his officers for dealing with the excess of people. I actually like to go ride my bike a lot on the beach. They dug up the sand something fair, so, and it was soft to start with, so that's been incompatible. But I was out riding around in the traffic and that, and actually, everybody, a lot of them spoke to me. They were polite, respectful, had conversations. I didn't actually have issues. I don't know if I'm charmed or something. I never knew that in the past. I'm surprised to find there was a bomb threat at one Daytona. It sort of explained some of the issues, you know, with the event moving. I can, you know, and the whole way that the internet works and flash mobs and loud sound systems, I'm not into loud sound systems when I'm trying to sleep. My wife was drawn to crowds. I'm not as much, but it is the way it is. I'd like to see the potential for this to continue in some way, but I think there needs to be more cooperation with those that are benefiting from it as far as financially to pick up part of the cost because it does seem excessively troubling. And most of the people seemed to have their heart in the right place, but their minds weren't always in the right place. I, you know, and actually, I live real close to 3,000 North Atlantic, and I knew something happened, but I didn't see the crime scene tape. But, you know, it was interesting to find out a little about that. So the one thing that I found the most objectionable was the black smoke from the vehicles. It was intrusive. They should have been ticketed, just like the train horns a couple of years ago were big. I thought those deserved to be ticketed, too. Thank you very much for your time.
I did have a speaker sheet from Chelsea Parcell.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, Chelsea.
Last but not least, let's see if I can remember everything. I kind of just wanted to give you guys some numbers. I'm the one that made the video, by the way. And if I would have known so many people would see it, I would have spent more than 30 minutes on it. But I just wanted to let you guys know that there was a video in there that a guy was intentionally digging holes. I don't know if you remember that one on the beach. And that one garnered 1.8 million views. All of them together, 1 billion views, roughly about that. So when someone said earlier that the whole world is seeing this, that is, that's true. And as far as the promoter, this gentleman mentioned the promoter, it is free for him to get on social media and condemn these activities, and it was my observation that he did none of that. There was not one ounce of his very active social media usage that was directed towards discouraging this type of thing. Right now, I would say that everything I've observed on social media in terms of canceling, canceling this event is kind of an I dare you attitude. So when I say that we need strong messaging, I, we really, really need strong messaging. There cannot be a, hmm, I don't know. And then, last but not least, which I know is to be taken up with Volusia County and Beach Patrol, I personally felt like, I'm a beachside resident, I felt like beachside was more controlled than the beach itself. All of those videos that you saw of people getting stuck, if you don't have a front drive shaft, you shouldn't be out on the beach, and you shouldn't be going past those four-by-four signs. So that, that was kind of my bone to pick just because I'm so close to that. I spent all day Sunday sitting on the beach, and I did not see one person sighted. So, like I said, I know that's a Volusia County issue, but that was, I felt like Mr. Young did a very good job as the daughter of two police officers. I totally empathize, and I just think we need to get it together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night, Daytona Beach, and thank you.
I don't want to be dismissed.
Yes.
And I want to ask our city manager, Mr. Fiecher, why do we still have COVID restrictions going on in the city?
I did not know we still had COVID restrictions going on.
Okay. Mr. Jagger, could you tell me?
I'm not aware of any COVID restrictions.
Okay. Because Malcolm just said we have COVID restriction. We should have no COVID restrictions going on in the city of Daytona Beach.
Well, I was not aware that.
So can we check into that and make sure it's lifted?
Yeah, that's, that's a simple.
Thank you.
Simple fix.
Okay. All right. We are saying, good night, Daytona Beach. Let us love one another.